We'd like to call our Monday, April 7th work session order. Welcome those who are joining us here in City Hall and those who are joining us remotely. I think we have Councilmember McNair, you with us on the phone? She's on right there? Okay, all right. All right, welcome. And then I know Councilmember Hare will be here a little later. But Councilors, we jump right into it. We have a pretty sizable agenda to cover, so we'll try to move things as quickly as we can. I think we have one Councilmember that may need to ask for, to be excused for a work conflict. Councilmember Benavente, just remind me when it gets to that. If y'all want to take that action soon as we open or get to the agenda?
Whenever I have to leave.
Okay, all right. All right, so we'll circle back to it. All right, Councilor, if we could, let's go to Councilmember Davis. You gonna do the prayer for us, sir? All right.
Well, we thank you for allowing us to make this place safely. We thank you that you give us wisdom and insight on, to make great decisions for the city of Fayetteville. We ask that you give us wisdom in every situation that we have to face today. And we ask this to be done in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Moving to 4.0, Mr. Manager, the whole meeting is your report. You got something else?
Mayor, we have a tremendous agenda in front of you. And so, and Lou, if you're giving your report, I will let us just move on to the next item.
All right, thank you, sir. And we also, Councilors, we get ready to approve the agenda. We do have Mr. Robert Van Gheens that has requested a closed session for economic development purposes. And so what I would like to do, just for the sake of freeing him up, is after we approve the agenda, if we can get a motion to go into closed session, we'll run next door real quick and have his brief update. And then we will come back in and get to it, if that's okay. So with that, I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Green makes a motion to approve. It's second about Councilmember Davis. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Councilor, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember McNair? Is she there, June? Is she on Zoom or can she throw a thumbs up or down?
It looks like she's trying to speak. Oh, thumbs up.
Thumbs up, okay. All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, and so motion carries. So Councilor, if we could, get a motion to go into closed session for economic development purposes?
Motion to go in closed session.
All right, Mayor Protim, there's a motion to go into closed session. There's a second. Second about Councilmember Davis. Any discussion on that? All right, Councilor, if we can, let's move over to the Lafayette Room. Yes, sir. Robo, do you need any audio visual?
I can talk off of it, that's fine. I guess it's...
I think we should go upstairs.
Is it easier if we're upstairs?
We can have it set up upstairs, yes, sir.
All right, all right. So Councilor, we'll retreat upstairs real quick. We'll be back.
We didn't take the...
Oh, yeah, we need to vote. Yes, sir. All right. Councilor, look to you for action on going into closed session. Councilmember McNair, thumbs up or down?
Thumbs up.
All right.
...
because, in a way, you're opening up the floodgates. And so, we want to make sure that, once you open that, that there isn't anything downstream that's impacted. And so, there are measures that are going to be required for that. So, this slide here is probably the most important, even though—so, if you don't remember anything else from this presentation, this one is the most important, even though there's really not a whole lot of words on it. But that's because what we're looking at here is really all of the different alternatives that we analyzed. We looked at a—from a fully breached dam, like I said, to all these downstream measures, to then the proposed or redesigned dam, and then all of the metrics here that we compared them to. So, red is bad, green is good, as simple as it can be. But red here means that there's a lot of downstream impacts. Yellow means that there's some, and green means that there is no downstream impact, or there could be even some benefit. And so, just as a snapshot here, you can see that the proposed redesigned dam is mostly green. So, the plan is, through this presentation, we're going to fill in the rest of this table in actual, you know, words that you can understand, if that's something that y'all want to do. This is a longer presentation. We have a lot of details, but just wanted to provide that as an opportunity for y'all.
Oh, we are, yeah, we already open, so. Who are we missing, though? Benevente and... I mean, that was upstairs. Yeah. Yeah, we're all open. So, all right, we'll move to 6.01, Presentation of College Lake Dam Proposed Solutions for Carvers Creek.
Where are we? Up there. Ah, the rain sounds great, doesn't it? Yeah, that would be helpful. Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. We're going to talk about the watershed master plan. We've been in front of you quite often. And today, we're going to talk about the College Lake Dam analysis and the proposed solutions for both College Lake Dam and Carvers Creek watershed as a whole. Samantha Ellis is here with me, and she'll be covering the details. So I'll give a brief overview, because y'all have heard a lot of this before, but just to give you a status update, because we're continuing to make a lot of progress, I'll provide a summary of proposed solutions that you have approved to date. And then Samantha will go into College Lake Dam. At the end of that presentation, we'll request consensus to include the recommended solution in our CIP. And then Samantha will move into the proposed solutions for Carvers Creek watershed. And then we'll end with requesting consensus to include those proposed solutions in the CIP. So you've seen this before. We're accelerating our stormwater CIP program through comprehensive citywide watershed studies. So we're studying the entire city, which turns out to be about 25% of the area of the city. Yeah, that's right. Sorry, we've got to be brief. We've got to run out there and take pictures. But we've won a lot of grants. We've done really well. Really appreciate the... It takes a lot of courage and gumption and persistence on your part to support us in this work. And so with all the work that we've done, we're over $26 million awarded to date, and fingers crossed, we'll be able to hang on to that. And last year, we were awarded the 2024 Association of State Flood Plane Managers James Lee Whip Local Award for Excellence. And that was presented to Mayor last year. So I've said, we are only studying 25% of the area of the city. So this is indicated by these yellow polygons you see here. So we've got 15 watersheds across the city. And just at a glance, we're primarily focused on impacts to our public right-of-way. We're evaluating impacts to emergency facilities, disconnected structures, and then structures in general, more than 400 square feet. This map shows, in the gray, the watersheds that we have completed to date. So these are the watersheds that we have brought proposed solutions to you. And then that's a total cost of 1.1 billion of identified need. Yeah, and that's just in these gray watersheds. The yellow ones, Buckhead, Beaver Creek, and Carvers Creek are watershed studies that we're currently working on. And then today, we're going to focus on the work that Kim Lee Horn and the team has done for Carvers Creek. And with that, I'm going to transition over to Samantha.
Thanks. All right, so we're going to focus first on College Lake Dam. And this gives a brief outline of what we're going to be talking about today, but also highlights why this dam is so important and why it is special enough to have its own presentation. So it really starts with that existing condition. It's in disrepair today and not meeting state standards for a dam, and so that's why we're talking about it. And then we'll look into the options that the city has for this dam. We'll go through all the different alternatives that we analyzed, the metrics that we looked at and compared those alternatives to, and then end with our summary and recommendation. So this helps give a little bit of an understanding of where we are, but also the importance of College Lake Dam. So it's at the bottom left-hand corner of the screen there. And what we can see here is everything that's downstream of the dam. And so it is considered a high-hazard dam by the state, which means it's based on the size, but also the potential damage that can happen downstream. So you see a lot of residential area. You also see two important roads, Ramsey Street and Shawcroft Road. All of these are impacted by whatever we do to College Lake Dam. And so again, to kind of give you an understanding of what it looks like today, it's a drained facility. So it is not holding back water like a lake, but there is some water in that facility that you can kind of see if you were to stand on top of the dam and look upstream. You see some water there. It's more of a wetland feature, though, today. And then if you look downstream, it's more of a naturalized channel and more defined. So the important part here is, though, that it is a city-owned facility. It's been city-owned since 2002, and it is also then the city needs to maintain it. And so that's part of the reason why we're talking today, is because the current conditions are not ideal. So to help you give an understanding, this is an existing outfall of College Lake Dam upstream. And so these are notes that we observed in the field, but also that the North Carolina Dam safety inspections and reports have shown and indicated to the city. So there's significant tree growth that needs to be removed. There's also, what you can see here, is erosion that's creating a sheer slope on the dam. And then also, we can see that there are remnants of the previous riser structure. And so really, what this is just indicating is this dam is not in the condition that it should be from the state standards, and it is constantly a maintenance concern for the city. And that's indicated even more by what happens after a storm event. So probably after today, what we'll end up seeing out there is something like this, where you can see debris just stacking up against the outfall. And then what happens is that water stages up in the dam, and that can cause a problem because, again, this dam is not meant to hold back water today. It's a drained facility for a reason. There is damage that can happen if water is to stage up too much behind it. And so the city has put some temporary measures in place that you can kind of see on the pictures to prevent the debris from actually getting into the pipe, because that's when it becomes a problem to try and remove it. So again, because it's a constant maintenance concern, the city, you know, has some options in order to, what to do with College Lake Dam. And really, there's three main options here. One is no action, but that's not really a feasible option based on what we've seen, because there does need to be a permanent solution for these maintenance concerns. And so that really leaves us then with a proposed or redesigned dam that meets the state standards, or to remove the dam or create a fully breached dam. But the thing to consider with that is that there is downstream mitigation that is required, because in a way, you're opening up the floodgates. And so we want to make sure that, once you open that, that there isn't anything downstream that's impacted. And so there are measures that are going to be required for that. So this slide here is probably the most important, even though... So if you don't remember anything else from this presentation, this one is the most important, even though there's really not a whole lot of words on it. But that's because what we're looking at here is really all of the different alternatives that we analyzed. We looked at a, from a fully breached dam, like I said, to all these downstream measures, to then the proposed or redesigned dam, and then all of the metrics here that we compared them to. So red is bad, green is good, as simple as it can be. But red here means that there's a lot of downstream impacts. Yellow means that there's some, and green means that there is no downstream impact, or there could be even some benefit. And so just as a snapshot here, you can see that the proposed redesigned dam is mostly green. So the plan is, through this presentation, we're going to fill in the rest of this table in actual, you know, words that you can understand, if that's something that y'all want to do. This is a longer presentation. We have a lot of details, but just wanted to provide that as an opportunity for y'all if you do want to have that kind of detail. But otherwise, everything is pointing to the proposed or redesigned dam.
Fantastic, because I've got some. And it looks like Mayor Proton does. So, not trying to mix apples and oranges, right? I'm looking at this. This is a city-owned dam. All right. What does that mean for the neighboring houses around here? Nobody goes swimming in anything like that. If it's repaired, and it catches water. So the fact that it's a city-owned dam means what to the surrounding property owners?
The fact that it's a city-owned dam means that it's really more of what's happening downstream. So if there's any kind of impact, not necessarily the surrounding houses upstream as much, but more the surrounding houses downstream.
Well, I guess my question here is, and I know we're kind of in a long litigation, right? And I don't want to jeopardize that. But when the city owns a dam, which is the difference between this and Aaron Lakes and Rayconda, right? If the city owned or proposed to own Rayconda and/or Aaron Lakes, it's been told to the residents that they have to give up some of their rights. It's now public property. But according to what you're saying, I'm not talking about the flooding impacts, because I'm sure there's been some analysis that shows the impacts or pros and cons of it being repaired versus in disrepair like this. I guess I'm curious to know, how do we understand, at some point, the city had to take this dam over, which is how they have it? Do you have the history of that, or when the city ownership started?
Yeah, the city started owning it in 2002. They bought it from a developer, and that's effectively what we have. But it was already drained by that time, so it was not a functioning dam.
And I'm just trying to say, as we look for a solution, you know, not admission of anything, but as you look for a solution, we've had a precedent, according to this, of where the city buys something and maintains it for the greater good. I would like to have a separate conversation on a different day. This is about this particular item, but, you know, options for bringing that to closure, because the longer litigation goes, the only people who get paid and benefit from that are the legal folks. So that's just a thought. I saw the lawyer over there had a twitch when I said that. I don't mean to mess up your hustle, man. But that's, I'll go to Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no other questions.
No, not tracking any. All right. Councilmember Mahondros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Slide 13, I think, which was the outfall condition slide, can you repeat what you said? You just were there. It was the one before this.
Oh, this one?
Yep.
Okay.
Can you repeat what you said about the trees?
Yes, so there is significant tree growth along the earthen embankment, and that all needs to be removed.
Does it negatively impact that outfall?
It negatively impacts the entire dam, so it is a structural concern.
So the reason I bring that up, in the past, in one project that comes to mind, which was a City of Fayetteville project, was between East and West Park Street, which is actually, I think, District 5 in Greens District, where there was some riprap. And it's a city right-of-way or city-owned little plot of land between East and West Park Street. And in the riprap, there's some trees growing, and I had asked about it. And I guess per state regulations, as I understand them, and Byron maybe, or Mr. Rose, y'all can help me out with this. So when you have, whether it's an open swell, or whether it's different stormwater control measures, particularly if it's an open swell or ditch, whether it's cleared and mowed and kept maintained like you would a yard, or whether the grass is overgrown and there's trees growing in it, I guess is acceptable to the state, because they're both quote-unquote "natural." However, as in this situation, trees and root systems undermine certain things. So that was my comment at the time, specifically on that Park Road one, is that whether it was city stormwater funds or whether it was grant-funded, there was taxpayer dollars invested to repair that particular area. And then we're just allowing trees to go in it, which is going to undermine that. So I think we should be mindful of, once we've repaired something, we should maintain it so that we don't have to repair it again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahondros. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Slide 14, you said that the city has put some things in place to keep the... What is that? What exactly is that? That's not the slide. It's whatever, Slide 14 on mine says.
Is that this one?
Yes.
Okay. Can you repeat that?
What exactly is, what is going on here?
What are we looking at?
Yeah, what are we looking at?
Yeah, this is the outfall pipe of the lake, so similar to here, but now there's water staged up, so it's after a large storm event. And what happens is there's a bunch of debris that is just stacking up against the pipe. And the problem is that if the debris gets into the pipe or blocks it completely, then it's really hard, the water can start staging up and not exiting. And so that's a problem, because we don't want this lake to overtop or have any kind of other structural issues. So we don't want that to happen.
How long has that debris been there?
It's cleared out fairly routinely, but, I mean, this is from February 2025. After pretty much every major storm event that we've seen recently, there's been some debris. Byron, I think you can probably speak to that, too.
Okay. That's, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the listening audience, can you explain the reason why we're focused on this specific location? Because I know we have a lot of flooding in different areas in a community that's one of the, you know, one of the main things that we hear about. So can you explain a little bit more why this is so important as a community versus, or why is it a priority?
Yes. So this dam in particular, again, based on everything that we're seeing out there in existing conditions, is not meeting the state standards. And so the city then needs to do something about it. And the concern is that we can either put the dam back, or we can build a new one, or, yeah, build a new one or take it down. And then if you take it down, there's just a lot of downstream impact. So there's potentially 50 structures downstream that see an increase in flooding. The roads downstream have flooding. So that's the reason that we're talking about this today.
Be impacted?
So, for instance, if...
If it's not...
Yeah, if we were to remove the dam today and then not do anything downstream, there would be 50 homes that would have an increase in flooding. Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Mahondros, is that a new button? Press?
Slide 16 is the summary.
Yeah, okay.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned, you know, this chart, to me, there's clearly only one answer, right? You got to do the dam. But you mentioned, you know, some of the other situations where it was maybe privately-owned facilities versus this city-maintained one. And I agree with you. If those communities want to work with our legal team and transfer ownership, I think the term "purchase," the city purchase was used earlier. I think a lot of times, developers or property owners will just gift those to the city just so they don't have to maintain them. So if those other communities are listening, that may be a path of least resistance, you know, if you want to drop the lawsuit and speak with our legal team to transfer those to the city, and we can maybe help out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just ask this question. Will College Lakes, once you've repaired the dam, will it be able to hold water?
So it will be able, what we're proposing is not that it's going to hold water consistently, so there's going to be just a small amount of water, wetland area, but it can safely pass large storm events. So it will hold the large storms and safely convey that downstream.
Okay, I understand from the diagram that you passed out, that you put your spillway at the bottom of the dam and emergency spillway at the top. How far is that distance between the top and the bottom?
I will go back here and show this. So we have the, what we're showing here is our top-of-bank, which is where this larger storm would go, so that's about at elevation 164.5. And then the elevation of our actual... Are you asking for the...
That's what you said. Go ahead, keep going.
Okay. Yeah, and so then the outfall essentially of our structure is at 142. So there's about a 20 to 20... Yeah.
So a follow-up question is, if we had a 100-year storm, do you think we would ever reach the overtopping of that?
No. We are, that is, it is not designed to overtop in anything but this 1/3 probable maximum precipitation event, which is an extreme event. The 100-year is set to just safely convey through that riser structure that's there.
Thank you for that. Let me just make one other comment. The city had this property since 2002, and it's been depleted, ignored, and forgotten for 23 years. I wouldn't behoove any private-owned property to give it to the city if that's the condition that they would leave it in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right, council, we'll look to, what do you all need to report received, or do you need direction? Ms. Sheila? And good job, too. I didn't preface it by that. As someone who's seen our process with this, to go from one or half of a project a year to a master plan, to grants now coming in, to actually trying to deal with the problem, even though that number's getting bigger. It was a lot smaller when we started this, but I want to say hats off to you all for thinking creatively and figuring out how to do this, so.
Right, and so we went through a lot of, I just want to take a few moments here. We went through a lot of analysis for this particular area, because in the past, when we've asked the council for such large sums of money, in this case, between $15 to $20 million, that if council elects, we will program into our CIP. We want to make sure that we have considered all options for this particular area, and that's why this slide is so important, that we want this community and this council to understand that we have vetted all possible options for this particular area, and this is the most cost-effective measure at this point. So our ask, I'll let Alicia go with the ask, but I just want to make sure that there are no questions regarding to the options we have left.
I see, Stormwater, Mr. Stormwater, Mr. Mahondros got his button.
Just one more question. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So the facility was deeded to the city in 2002. When did it, when were we first notified that it failed the state levels?
So it does not meet, even back in the day, it did not meet the safety requirements where it allows for the storm to safely overtop. But in terms of the safety inspection, I would have to go back and look at more recent...
So there's a good chance that it was deeded to the city in similar condition, probably just got worse over the last 20, 2, 3 years?
What I know is that it was drained before the city, before it was given to the city, and I believe that that was due to the fact of knowing that it wasn't in good enough condition to maintain a lake.
Sure, and then kudos to, piggyback on the mayor. I actually posted on my council page, as well as my personal page today, accolades of the Stormwater Department, Stormwater Utility of Fayetteville. But it's because of these watershed studies that we're identifying these more priority areas. And we're going back fixing stuff that either has broken recently or was undersized since it was built in 70 or 100 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahondros. So seeing nothing further, council, I entertain a motion to... All right, Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that council to approve the redesigning of College Lakes Dam and pursuing applicable funding sources for the proposed dam and is programmed in the CIP budget.
All right, motion by Mayor Proton. Second by Councilmember Mahondros. Discussion, Councilmember Benevente, is that discussion? All right. Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember McNair, you with us? Up or down?
Yes.
Okay, hey, how are you? Okay. All right, motion carries, unanimous. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the rest of Carvers Creek watershed. Samantha's going to go through the proposed solutions that have been developed for the watershed as a whole, and then we're going to request consensus to include those proposed solutions in the CIP. So you're right, Mayor, that 1.1 billion is going up. Yeah, but this is just, the College Lake Dam is considered separately. It's not included in this.
Okay. All right, so this is a slide that y'all have probably seen for other watersheds, but this is for Carvers Creek. And we effectively looked at, it's a large watershed, but we really focused on about 1.5 square miles of it. And there's a lot of numbers on this slide, but one of the more important ones here is this number of disconnected structures, which, if you don't know, is when a large storm happens and there's enough water that crosses the road, that those structures are no longer able to get in and out. And so in this watershed in particular, we have a few single egress-ingress accesses. And so we can see that there's over 700 of these structures in this watershed that were identified, and through our proposed solutions, we have 18 of them. We've resolved all 772 of them. And the total cost for all of these improvements, and what we're showing here, is about $54 million. And that is not including the College Lake Dam improvements that I just mentioned. So what we're going to focus on here is just a few of the top solutions that we have for the primary system. And this just gives a better indication of where we are. Similar location, where we're looking at north of 295 here, and then also Shawcroft Road and Ramsey. And so what we're going to look here is at Summer Chase Drive, which is north of 295. And then we're also going to look at Shawcroft Road and Garden Court and Ramsey Street. And so just to point out, Shawcroft Road here is not the same Shawcroft culvert that washed out in Hurricane Matthew and was repaired. We are looking a little further west, but there are multiple locations throughout the watershed where water is crossing over Shawcroft, and hence the disconnected structures that we have. So Summer Chase Drive here is another example of a bunch of disconnected dwellings, so we have over 200 of them, because it is the only in-and-out for this neighborhood, and there's an undersized culvert there. There's also some smaller pipes with, again, there's even a foot to two feet of flooding on the street in the 10-year storm. So what we looked at here is just upsizing these pipes and providing a different outfall that resolves all the disconnected dwellings and the street flooding, and so that's about $2.4 million. And then moving ahead on to the Shawcroft Road and Garden Court. So what we have here is actually a tributary to the north of Shawcroft Road, and it ends up ponding up and overtopping onto Shawcroft, because there is not enough storage and availability in that stream, and also impacting houses on Garden Court. And so what we recommended here is no pipes or anything like that. It's just simply floodplain storage, so just additional area for the water to flow. And that eliminates impact to structures, as well as the flooding on Shawcroft. And just to help illustrate this a little more, this slide is showing what I mean by floodplain benching, which is when you look downstream, that gray line there is the existing ground, and we'd be cutting into that, and again, just providing more channelized flow away from the houses and the streets. And so finally, for the primary solutions, we're looking at Ramsey Street, which is south of 295, this crossing here. There's, it's an NC DOT road, undersized culverts, where we're making them bigger and also adding some, again, floodplain benching on either side. The important part here, though, is that this is an area where NC DOT actually has a project with Ramsey Street improvements, and the city has been corresponding with them. NC DOT is aware of our project here as well, and so it's currently under design. And so, again, there's correspondence between the city and NC DOT here. And so then, to look at some secondary system proposed solutions, again, just looking at our top ones for this watershed, this is, again, this area here where we're going to be focused on the Shawcroft area, and then we also have one in further west on Deer Path Drive. And so, again, just to point out that we have two that are focused on Shawcroft Road but are not at the same locations of the Shawcroft culvert that was repaired with Hurricane Matthew, but we have Holyroot and Kirkwall. And so this first one here is really just showing on the left hand of the screen, there's a lot of private, there's pipes that go through a lot of private property, and the outfall is very undersized, and again, causes about one to two feet of flooding on Shawcroft Road and even the 10-year event, which is disconnecting over 500 structures. And so what we're proposing here is upsizing the outfall, but also we want to try and minimize impact to folks' houses and their yards. And so what we've... And so what we recommended is actually putting more of the pipe in the street right-of-way, and that allows us to not have to do any improvements to the pipes on private property, so no trees taken down, that kind of thing. And this addresses the disconnected dwellings and street flooding. And this is about 1.1 million. And then in this area here, we have Kirkwall Road and Shawcroft Road intersecting, and what you can't really see here is that Kirkwall Road has a pretty heavy slope to it, so there's a lot of water that just runs off and sits on Shawcroft Road, and so what we recommended here is putting some new infrastructure on Kirkwall and also providing additional inlets on Shawcroft. So again, all here, all what we're doing here is just helping street flooding, and that's about $700,000. And then finally, we have our last proposed solution here. This is at Deer Path Road, and it's a little further west, and in this case, we still have a lot of pipes that are on private property. The outfall is very undersized. So in this case, we knew that we couldn't fit a bigger pipe between the existing houses, so we recommended an additional outfall in another location to help with the capacity. That helps eliminate impacts to structures along that road, and we've also recommended some additional pipes on Deer Path Drive, because there was only two inlets for that whole road. So both of these things help solve the flooding, and that's looking at about $2 million. And so I will turn that over to Alicia.
So we're recommending or requesting that council provide consensus to approve the 18 proposed solutions in Carvers Creek watershed that have been developed to enable staff to program them into the annual CIP prioritization process and pursue grants and funding as applicable.
All right. So you have Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Mahendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm prepared to make a motion when questions are finished. I'll let, you can make the motion, you're Stormwater.
So move.
All right, motion by Councilmember Mahendros, seconded by Mayor Protem to approve the recommended actions in the discussion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes on that. Councilmember McNair.
A thumbs up.
All right, thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Right, Stormwater, Stormwater.
All right, Mayor, council, thank you. I have with me Molly Brown from Woolport. Woolport is the consultant who performed this impervious area and stormwater utility rate assessment, so I'll give a brief introduction and then turn it over to Molly Brown. But essentially, city council during the FY24 budget cycle charged us with doing a impervious area analysis to look at supporting a tiered rate structure for your stormwater utility fee. Currently, Fayetteville is the only Phase 1 community in North Carolina that does not operate under a tiered rate for your residential properties. So we are going to seek consensus on this item to update the stormwater billing database based off new impervious area data, so that we are accurately assessing fees to non-residential properties, so these would be your commercial properties, so we want to properly assess them based on their actual impervious surface. And then we would like for council to provide guidance on which of the tiered structures we propose, if any, to move forward with developing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Molly.
Thank you. As Byron said, my name is Molly Brown, and I'm with Woolport, and with me I have Gordon Rose and Sujit Eka with Gradient, who have been our team members throughout this project. I'll just give a brief project overview. This project had three distinct phases. The first was collecting new aerial imagery and processing that new aerial imagery, and then we did an impervious area analysis based on that newly collected highly, high-resolution aerial imagery, which you can see some of the examples on the screen here of the building footprints in red, and then the additional impervious area, which included driveways and sheds and other things in blue. And then we used the information from the impervious area analysis to do a full evaluation of the city's stormwater utility and make some recommendations to the rates. So some of the project goals that we started off with was, like Byron said, to look into developing a tiered rate structure for residential, but we also looked at the utility as a whole. We wanted it to be fair and equitable, simple and understandable, easily applied, and maybe make it more similar to other Phase 1 communities in North Carolina, and then, of course, generate sufficient revenue to support all of the stormwater program goals. We did a benchmarking analysis to compare Fayetteville's stormwater utility to four different communities in North Carolina, Durham, Greensboro, Raleigh, and Winston-Salem, and we also chose Columbia, South Carolina as well to compare Fayetteville's utility to. That was really because of their military presence, and they're also implementing a large stormwater CIP program as well. So the, the cells in the pink color are the ones that are closest to Fayetteville, and then I have another slide that kind of compares revenues from our benchmarking analysis. So you can see the revenues generated are kind of across the board, or kind of all over the place. But when you look at the chart at the bottom, that shows the stormwater revenue per capita and also the revenue per square mile, and you can see that Fayetteville's kind of in the middle of, of all of them when you look at, in terms of capita and square mile. We also did kind of a check to make sure that the city's equivalent residential unit or ERU is actually representative of what is, how much square footage of impervious area is on residential properties in the city today. So basically, what we did is rather than delineate all 60-something thousand residential properties, we delineated a random sampling of 2,000 single-family residential, and we basically used that as a check to check the city's current ERU of 2266 square feet against what we calculated with our analysis of 2329. So it's a less than 3% increase, and so we decided to move forward with keeping the ERU the same size since it's very close. So this is moving into the impervious area for commercial properties. Basically, we did the random sampling of delineated, delineating the properties for the residential, but then we, when we moved into the commercial side, we redelineated all impervious area buildings and parking lots, sheds, et cetera, for all commercial properties in the city. We had, we saw about 60% of those properties with an increase in impervious area in comparison to what's in the county's current, current billing database, and then we saw about 35% with some kind of increase. But this is kind of basically just calibrating the meter, going back out there, figuring out the actual amount of impervious area that are on these commercial properties and billing them according to what, what is actually there on the ground. And I think one other thing we wanted to add here is that just updating the amount of impervious area for the commercial properties is going to generate roughly $1 million additional in revenue per year, and that's at the current $7 per month rate. So this slide is just an assessment of the city's current rate structure. So currently, residential properties are bill, being billed at a flat fee of $7 per month, and no matter how much impervious area they have on their property, they're billed one ERU, which is 2,266 square feet. You can see in the bar charts that 92% of, of the stormwater or of the accounts are residential and only 8% commercial, but when you look at revenues, the commercial properties are generating 60% of the revenue, and the residential are, account for 40% of the revenue, but when you look at that on a impervious area basis, the reason that the commercial is paying 60% of the bill is because they are contributing 63% of the impervious area. So we feel that they are paying for the impervious area that they are generating or that they have on their properties.
Do have a question for you. Mayor Protem.
Okay, so I, I need some clarification. So what I'm seeing is the percentage is 92% is residential.
Right.
60% of the revenue is commercial.
Right.
And the impervious area, 63% is commercial.
Right.
So where my question goes back to this is, if you are residential, how much is it, I mean, a rough estimate, an average of a year, do they pay for storm? $84.
Right.
If you are commercial, it can go from $500 to $4,000.
Right.
If you have, well, expect, well, I, I was being generous. It can go up to double digits. If I own a car dealership, my stormwater is a lot, because I have a lot of.
Impervious, right.
But if I have a problem with my stormwater and I call the city, they're going to say, fix it. We're not here to help you. We're not going to give you anything. It's private property. So 60% of what the revenue is, is giving 92% of every, so basically, business is paying for their parking lots
Right.
for us to do, to give them no help. And, and please tell me I'm wrong, because I really hope I am.
So I would, I would say it's not, that we're not giving you any help. So if you look at the third pie chart, yes, they're paying 60% of the revenue, but they're generating 63% of the stormwater runoff that's coming off. So it, it doesn't stay, a lot of these commercial sites were developed prior to 2009, so there is no onsite stormwater control measure to mitigate the runoff. So a lot of these older commercial developments, it rains, it runs off, it goes downstream.
So I'm going to give you one better, not to interrupt you. So Ramsey Street.
Where?
Ramsey Street, which we've talked about very well today, and I appreciate everything y'all have done with Ramsey Street today, but we're going to go back to stormwater. So when the first Walmart was built, everything flooded on Ramsey Street. And I think, you know, it was like, all of a sudden, if you owned something on Ramsey Street where you never had flooding, within, you know, two months of the Walmart being open, everybody had stormwater issues. So, so I think that there is a happy medium in there, but as you say, you know, the stormwater runoff, if you have a parking lot and you have a small building, I don't think that's 90% of, you know, if there's only five bathrooms and a small kitchen. So I understand, I'm just want to put it into perspective.
Well, go ahead, you responded to.
I've lost my train of thought now.
Sorry.
Happens to me, brother.
Getting off.
All right, I'm going to go to Councilmember Mahendros, Benavente, then I had a question.
I know what I was going to say now. I was going to say, and Molly may speak to this as well, that kind of breakdown of 60-40 for percent of revenues and 63-37 for impervious. Fayetteville wasn't an outlier with respect to the other municipalities. I think, it may not have been 60-40, but I think if you looked at the percentage of revenues and the percentage of impervious areas, it's, it kind of would mirror this in other municipalities as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mahendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think just to piggyback on what Byron said and to try to answer Mayor Protem's question. So while I agree on the surface, it looks that way, but we got to remember a couple things. One, if you follow stormwater back to like 1985, when it became a thing, there's two parts to stormwater. There's quality and quantity. So this all came about for quality, and then along the way, obviously, quantity becomes a problem, so we, we focus on it, but a lot of the stormwater fees are not even on the residential side for fixing or correcting stormwater issues. It's for the inspections and the other things the Stormwater Department does. So the difference, the second point, the difference with stormwater residential versus commercial, most commercial projects, they're kind of self-sustaining, so that stormwater, if it's a retention pond or whatever it is, is specifically for that project, whereas a residential subdivision, you have stormwater that's like for the whole neighborhood. So when I was on Stormwater Advisory Board, we struggled with that, because City of Fayetteville, I mean, stormwater wasn't here locally until, I think, 1999. Cumberland County and, and the City of Fayetteville did it together. In 2009, I think, is when the City of Fayetteville got its own NPDS permit from the state, which dictates kind of certain things we do, but that, when, when, I think we revised that in 2019 or 2020, you all that were on council revised the stormwater ordinance and kind of spelled out that the city was not responsible for maintenance and repairs on residential unless it was on a City of Fayetteville easement, City of Fayetteville designated easement, and that's when a lot of residents had concerns, Stormwater Advisory Board had concerns that we need to help residents, because if it's a costly 25, 50, $100,000 repair, we can't, we can't do it. So that's why we have the Drainage Assistance Program. But the Drainage Assistance Program is funded from the stormwater fee, but all these other, like dam repairs and stuff, they're usually grant-funded. So point is, that stormwater fee that the commercial pays doesn't pay for stormwater repairs in large part anyway, but so, a lot of the older dealerships, to your point, that were pre-2009, I mean, you go there like a rain that we had earlier, and they're shedding water right onto the road. It happens on Skybow, happens on Ramsey, happens on Brad Boulevard, happens on McPherson Church Road. So I don't know if that helps or not.
All right. Councilmember Benavente.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Byron, I kind of wanted you to just reiterate your points, because I think it's not about proving Mayor Protem wrong, it's just making sure that we are getting the right perspective on it. I don't want it to be skewed for these kind of examples that are not the norm, because as you said, we're comparable to what other communities are doing. This isn't average, and certainly you can find an outlier here or there where they've got one restaurant and three bathrooms or whatever you said, but the reality is when you look at these things comprehensively, what you guys are presenting makes sense, but help it, help me make it make sense to everyone, because I think it is really easy to, again, skew what is fair.
So I'll, let me use a real-world example. We'll use the mall, okay? The mall was developed pre-ordinance, so it was developed well before 2009. So if you look at a, if we go to the first chart, the mall, I think, is made up of three or four different parcels, so that would be three or four different accounts. If you look at the percentage of the revenue, the mall would be paying thousands of dollars in stormwater utility fee, but they have a large impervious area footprint that they are discharging into Buckhead Creek that we then have to convey down and, and manage the flow of that stormwater. So that's just kind of a real, a real-world example where they're, they're one account, they pay a lot of money, but they are discharging a lot of stormwater off their parcels.
All right, so, so to that point, right, after the UDO and the stormwater ordinance, you know, I don't know if anybody here has ever had to put in a retention pond and how expensive that is to do it, maintain it, pay for the bond on it, the city never, ever, ever comes to take it back over. So i- is there any credit or consideration given for that? For, you know, if you had a mall today, they would have to retain and, and put in this expensive retention pond.
So the, the city does offer a stormwater fee credit for development, that if they meet certain standards, I think they can get almost up to a 60% credit.
Definitely need to hear more about that, because I'm not sure, you know, and that kind of balances out the whole commercial part, because you may spend hundreds of thousands dollars putting this retention pond in here and the maintenance of it over time, but, you know, you still have a large impervious area that gets looped into this, so definitely need to hear about that.
And, and we do, when we have new development. And, and we do, when we have new developments come through the development review process, we do make them aware of the fee credit.
And what do they have to do to get it?
Oh, gosh, there's a, there's a couple of different things that they could do. There's different percentages they can get. I think the max you can get sixty percent, but we can, we can provide more details.
Yeah, that's, that would be helpful. All right, uh, so another, uh, Mayor Protem, did I see another hand over here?
Well, I was just gonna put what you said into a motion because like I said, I don't want to put this for pretend, uh, what help exists, you know, or saying that, you know, it's, we're somehow doing this unfair thing. Byron just gave a really good list of things that we are doing to address all the issues that both of you guys are bringing up.
So if I may?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So going back to new development, so let's talk about the development, the, the place that's there. It's been there for twenty years. They have a star- stormwater issue in their parking lot. They call up the city and the city says it's on private property. By the time you turn around, you pull up your parking lot, you know, you're looking, you know, you can be looking anywhere from thirty to a hundred thousand dollars to get it fixed. Is there any help? You know, I'm not misrepresenting anything, I'm just giving the facts of a small business owner, that, you know, you pay this amount every month and it, it's not eighty-four dollars, it, it, it's thousands. Is there any help there?
So the, the way the current Stormwater Enterprise is set up, we do not offer assistance to commercial developments for private infrastructure improvements.
Okay, so if there is a, you know, if there's something that needs to be fixed in their parking lot for stormwater, like I said, it comes up, you know, anywhere from thirty to a hundred plus thousand dollars, we do not have anything to help, any programs.
Correct.
But we do have programs for new development, six, up to sixty percent.
There's a fee, there's a fee credit. If, if you had a, a, a new development, um, that came in and then let's say five years from now, they have some internal issues with their parking lot, like you were mentioning, we, we still would not have funding for, for that, but there is a fee credit that they can apply to their, um.
So, but even if it's an old one and they do the hundred thousand dollars, there's still no fee credit.
Yeah, you, yeah, you can, they can retrofit things.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's good to know. Thank you.
We can provide more information on the fee credit.
Yeah, need to do that, yeah. All right, Council, uh, Councilman Benaventia, press.
I was gonna make a motion to have that done in a more formal capacity because, you know, that example of the small business, I thought Byron, you just said, the reason they have to pay for it on their own is because if we really taxed them on all the real runoff that happens, it would be an incredible dollar figure. So by the, by virtue of saying that, hey, how about we all just take care of our own sides of the street, that it kind of actually works out in their favor. But if that's unclear, or if it's trying to be skewed in a way that makes it unclear, I would really like a presentation on this topic so that no one can make these incorrect claims. So my motion is to have a formal discussion on the credits and exactly why we charge people what we charge them, and that it's not that we're screwing over the small business, we're actually benefiting them by not charging them for as much as we could be.
And we've got some more slides that go to the, the fee.
Oh.
Not done yet.
All right, you know, y'all gotta stop us once we just say, but, but please, proceed. Council, let's try to hold to the, to the end so we can.
Not too many left, so. We also did a level of service assessment.
I'll come back to that.
Um, where basically we just kind of looked at the four main, um, groups or that stormwater supports, and that's the capital projects, administrative support, system maintenance of the stormwater system within the road right of way, and then regulatory compliance. The one thing that really stood out to us was, the first presentation talked to it as well, is all of the stormwater capital CIP projects that have come out of all of these watershed studies. So figuring out ways to fund, to fund those projects to improve the stormwater system. So we did five-year, um, future projections for the stormwater program from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-thirty, and we, um, applied factors such as inflation, system growth, wage increases, and then to what we were just talking about, we also applied some revenue decreases to our numbers, which, um, was if there was uncollect, uncollectible bills and then, um, billing credits applied to, um, customers' bills based on, um, the stormwater credit manual. We also, um, came up with a few additional program needs, the big one being the CIP. Um, also suggested, um, working on a strategic asset management plan for maintenance. There were staff discussions about, um, improving or adding more to the water quality monitoring program, um, increasing some of the stormwater structural control inspections, and then coming up with a funding, um, analysis for all the priority CIP. So this slide gets really busy, um, but if you just focus on the expenses versus revenue in the top left, this shows the expenses and revenues breakdown from twenty-five to thirty. It includes the revenue, stormwater fee revenues and then fees from other services like inspections and that kind of thing. And then it ha, it takes into account all of those projections that we were just looking at, and you can see a bit of a deficit in twenty-five, but then you're seeing a surplus in twenty-six through thirty. It ranges from seven hundred and sixty-five thousand to a little over two million, and those are dollars that could be, um, used to help fund the CIP program. This table here shows, um, rates that would need, that would need to be charged in order to generate additional CIP funding. So one example is if the city wanted to generate five million more dollars annually in revenue to support the CIP program, at the seven dollars per month current rate, that rate would have to increase to nine dollars and fifty-one cents. Um, and twenty-seven with the approved rate of eight dollars, that rate would have to increase to ten fifty-two. And then twenty-nine, in twenty-nine with the approved rate increase of nine dollars, that fee would have to increase to eleven fifty-two. So this is just showing that if you wanted to generate revenue, um, for additional annual CIP funding, um, what those rates would look like. And you can see on the more extreme end of twenty million dollars, that's closer to seventeen, eighteen dollars a month. So this chart here is basically what we looked at before, but this is with the addition of that one million dollars from accurately assessing the commercial properties. Um, so basically, we did a calibration of the meter to properly assess the amount of impervious areas that's on the commercial property. We think that that will generate about a million dollars starting in FY twenty-six. So this is the same funding breakdown, but, um, you have a surplus of one point seven to almost four million in FY twenty-seven, so that, those are dollars that can be used to fund CIP as well. Going back to kind of what we were talking about in the beginning with, um, possibly transitioning from a flat rate structure for residential, um, customers to a tiered rate structure, these are the five benchmarking communities that we were talking about earlier. Durham, Greensboro, Raleigh, Winston-Salem, I think Byron mentioned this, all have a tiered rate structure for residential. So Green, Durham and Greensboro have three tiers, Raleigh and Winston-Salem have four tiers. Um, and you can see they're based on the impervious area per, per parcel. So for, and Durham, for example, less than two thousand square feet, they pay four ninety-five, two thousand to four thousand, they pay ten twenty-five, greater than four thousand, twenty-fifty-three. So they're assessed more on the, um, actual amount of impervious area on their property versus, um, the way it currently is set up. You could have a piece of property with a ten thousand square foot home and they're paying one ERU, which is seven dollars per month. So we evaluated, I think, ten or twelve different residential tiered rate structures, and I'm gonna present three today. This one is a rate structure with t- three tiers, um, the black, sixty-seven percent of the parcels are parcels with less than one ERU or two thousand, two hundred and sixty-six square feet of impervious area, and this is built, the building footprint only. They would stay at the seven dollars per month rate or eighty-four dollars annually. And then it kind of stair steps up from there. If they have a little bit more impervious area or one to one and a half, um, an ERU on their property, they're, they'd be paying ten fifty, and that's twenty-seven percent of the residential customer base. Um, and then tier three, which would be six percent of the residential customer base. If they have greater than one and a half ERU on their property, they're paying for that additional impervious area. They'd be paying fourteen dollars a month. And with this tiered rate structure at seven dollars per ERU per month, that would be generating an additional a million dollars in revenue.
All right, let me put a pause, Dave, and I'll ask Mr. Stormwater to hold his question. Go ahead, sir.
I just want to make sure. I heard correctly, did you say on this chart right here that, um, this is only for the building, not all impervious area?
Yes.
So this doesn't include driveways, it doesn't include sheds, it doesn't include pools?
Right.
And include any of that? Okay.
Yep. Ready? Okay. This is the second rate structure that we looked at, um, also three tiers. In this rate structure, twenty-six percent of the customers would actually see a decrease in their monthly bill, so that, their rate would decrease from seven to five twenty-five. Forty-two percent of customers would stay the same, and then thirty-one percent of customers with greater than twenty-three hundred square feet would see an increase to ten dollars and fifty cents a month. And with this, um, with this structure, you'd see an increase in revenue of roughly five hundred thousand dollars annually. Okay, this is the third tier structure that we looked at, um, also three tiers, and this one, seventy-seven percent of the parcels would stay at the seven dollar per month flat rate. Twenty-two percent would increase to fourteen dollars a month, and one percent would increase to twenty-one dollars a month. And this one is the most similar to the way that the rounding happens with the commercial So I guess I'll say an example of that. So if a commercial property has like five thousand square feet of impervious area, they're billed the number of ERUs they have on their property, so you would divide the five thousand by twenty-two sixty-six, so they would have about two point three ERUs on their property, but they would be billed three ERUs, so it rounds up. Um, so this, the way that the rounding is done, this tiered structure is most similar to the way commercial properties are billed. And this structure would generate roughly one point two eight million dollars in additional revenue annually at the current seven dollar per ERU per month.
So this was all impervious?
They're all buildings. So basically, as a part of this effort, we delineated impervious area on all commercial properties. And then for the residential piece, we did a random sampling about, of about twenty-three hundred residential properties to check the size of the ERU. We didn't do impervious area delineation on all sixty-five thousand residential properties. So this is actually based on what is in the county's billing database right now, which is just based on tax assessment building footprints. Um, and then this is just a quick reminder of the project goals, that we wanted to be fair and equitable, wanted to make this simply, simple and understandable, easily applied, similar to other North Carolina Phase One communities, and to generate revenue to support the program goals. And I'll turn it back over to Byron.
Yep, so I'll be quick, this will be the last slide. So essentially, we're gonna, we're recommending that we leave the ERU size as is. Uh, as far as what their impervious area, um, evaluation showed, uh, we want to go ahead and update the billing database with the new impervious area moving into fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, this is where we've talked about recalibrating the meter on some of those commercial facilities. Some will pay more, some will pay less, but they will be accurately assessed based on what they have. Um, so this would see an overall increase of about a million dollars in revenue. Uh, we, we are still reconciling some data, um, information that we're getting from the county. And then with regards to the rate structure, you have a number of options that you have. Uh, you can continue with the flat rate, status quo as is, with the future proposed increases in twenty-seven and twenty-nine, or, or we can pursue one of the tiered options we presented to you for FY twenty-six, uh, again, with those future rate increases that were proposed in twenty-seven and twenty-nine.
That's it? All right, well, so I did have a couple of questions for you guys. Um, one, um, your calculation for the impervious for residential, um, they're not just looking on the county's tax roll and say, you know, uh, Mayor Protem has a five thousand square feet house, uh, which could be level one and two. They are actually looking at the footprint of it, right? Okay, and then two, how does, unlike commercial where you have a building that, that takes up impervious or, or causes, you know, rainwater to have to fall down, you have a lot more grass and sod and things that absorb it around residential developments, how does that factor into your calculation for the runoff?
The residential is only the building. Basically, it, since there's so many accounts for the residential, we didn't delineate every single residential property. So that's, it's also, almost every utility has an equivalent residential unit, the ERU, which is basically how you get around having to delineate every single parcel because it becomes expensive and it's a lot to keep up with the data on the backend if somebody adds a pool or adds a shed or adds a piece of.
So if you're residential, your, your price is X per square foot, is what you're saying?
You're, you pay for twenty-two sixty-six or one ERU.
Yeah, I think the best way to look at it for a residential project, and when we're talking about the building footprints.
Yeah.
Let's just look between twenty-five oh one and forty-eight hundred, that middle one. Uh, if, if the building footprint of your house is twenty-seven hundred square foot, if you add a pool or take out a shed, that's probably not gonna put you into the next tier or the below tier. So it's like she was saying, there's, there's so many residential properties that the amount of time it would take to delineate.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not suggesting that. I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to distinguish is if there's a twenty-seven hundred square foot home that's surrounded by a yard with grass and things that help the situation, or if there's a twenty-seven hundred square foot building in a, in a commercial space that doesn't have as much, you know, you may have a couple of islands and different things, but I guess you're counting the building and the, the surface, the hard surface against the commercial versus not on the residential.
Yes.
All right, got you. But you do not count driveways and those kind of things that also could impact it.
Correct, I, yeah, so for a single-family residential, your, your driveway or your basketball goal out back or your tool shed is not counted against.
Got you, got you. Okay, all right. And, uh, did have, I can't believe Councilman Mahajos has his.
It's the last thing. So first of all, good work. I know this was a, a huge undertaking, but to your point, Mr. Mayor, so like on the commercial, they do the LiDAR or whatever the technology is, where you look at all the impervious area, while this is a good first step, and I know it was a huge undertaking to make it more equitable, the stormwater fee, and I think it's needed, uh, the fact that we're the only, you know, NPDS permit holder city that doesn't have it speaks to that. But I know some of our discussions in, in Stormwater Advisory Board on this specific topic generated from, and Byron, I think you presented and John Larch before you, there were some instances where residents came and applied for the Drainage Assistance Program because they were having an issue, and then when staff goes in and starts looking at it, it's because a neighbor down the street had a backyard that was just all grass fenced in, and then they went in and put a pool and then either concreted or made. and then either concreted or made an impervious perv, impervious area of their whole backyard, which is now shedding water everywhere. So while this is a good first step in making it more equitable, and I know it'd be, as hard as this was, it would be a hundred times harder to do impervious for all residential, all sixty-five thousand properties, but it's still, because those, those residents that are doing stuff that doesn't meet the, the stormwater ordinance, and making more impervious area than they're supposed to, they're causing issues that we're having to go address. I just want to make that distinction. Thank you.
All right, before I go to Councilman Benaventia, to clean up this, you had a question?
Just on the tier structure, because, well, we're being asked to pick one today?
You, you most certainly can, or you can...
Can I see two and one really quick again? Uh-huh. Okay. Well, and maybe this is a question for City Manager Hewitt. Do we have other fees that are parsed out into percentages like this? Or is this stormwater proposal the first time we've done something like that? Or is that, are there other fees currently that are structured this way?
Mark, is that...
Well, no, I'm talking about the fees specifically.
No, but thank you for, thank you for...
Thank you, Jim. Paul, thank you for, for asking a question. Because I want to answer, answer your question with kind of a clarification too. Are we are actually two parts today, right? The first part is the county mapping component?
Yeah, so we, we would, yes, that's sort of one thing was recommended, is to update the billing database, so that we're accurately assessing the commercial facilities. And then we are seeking guidance from council on what rate structure they want us to pursue.
And if so, when?
Yes.
So I'm not familiar with any of that, specifically your question or like that.
Well, I really like the number three, right? I, I think that the fact that you guys are thinking about, because I, I'll be honest, the revow discussion, the property tax discussion, has made me start to rethink fees a little bit, as a kind of flat tax that kind of hits everyone, sort of, you know, regardless of their parcel size, regardless of how large their business is. And so this idea that we could have a more progressive tax, or excuse me, fee distribution, I think is incredibly interesting, and ought to be something that we consider with all of our city fees, honestly, beyond just the stormwater one, if that's the case. Because, you know, when we think about, well, we're talking about fees and taxes, when revow came back, the people who with the most, the people with the most expensive houses went up the least. The people with the least expensive houses went up the most. So if we end up dialing anything back, you know, the, basically, it makes sense that the fees being parsed out like this, I think, also gets us to sort of address that fact, that, you know, our revenue neutral tax rate is gonna have some people paying less in taxes, who are at the very, very tip-top end. So maybe this is how we can, again, make it a fair assessment of who's got the biggest parcels, who's got the most impervious, you know, areas in their parking lots. I just think this is really interesting, and we should consider how to apply this in several different ways across the board, but at least today, for today's question, three makes the most sense. And I think it addresses some concerns that were brought up previously about small businesses with just, you know, one room and two bathrooms, or one, whatever the comment was, because they'll, they'll, they'll stay the same. And then the folks who got more can do more.
All right. Mr. Hewitt, real quick, and I had one thing, I promise I'm not gonna belabor this, we need to, we need to move to the next item. Mr. Hewitt? So, two things. One, the slide that showed your projected upcoming cost, where is it at? Okay, future pro, future projections?
Mm-hmm.
Can you go to that?
Oh. Sorry.
All right. So according to this, this is you projecting out what the upcoming costs is what will be. So two point three percent inflation, you know, with these tariffs, that's probably gonna be ten point three. Two percent on system growth, and then wages, right? So that's roughly eight percent, eight point three. And then you're, you're expecting a down in cost about four percent.
Those are pretty conservative, the down.
Okay, so hopefully it's more, but okay, but, but that still leaves about a net increase of about four percent. So if you bring in this additional revenue, if we change this structure, have revenue bonds been considered to accelerate and save us money on some of those CIP? What are we planning to do with the money? I don't want to collect money that's gonna build a fund balance over here, and take it away from the, the day-to-day citizens, local personal economics. So is there a plan to use this for a revenue bond, to, or a portion of the new revenue to accelerate some of these projects? You know, that billion dollars that Sheila just presented was half, five hundred million in twenty, twenty-fourteen, so now it's a billion plus. So I kind of want to talk to that before I make a decision about...
Well, and Byron can jump on this as well. I think in, and Sheila, while Jeff is coming forward slowly, this is really talking about current operations as well. The one point one billion dollars, there is nothing in your revenue stream now, or even one...
I got it.
Or even one million dollars additional that would cover...
Right. Yeah, just making a point. I, I say we only did a fifth of that, right? But what do, what do we plan to do with the new money that you would collect?
So yes, sir, the, the rate model for the stormwater is based on a mix of Pago funding for capital, and then debt. So typically, what you do is debt fund the major projects, so that they, over twenty years, you can pay for them. And then the maintenance projects, as you saw on the table, that they did the maintenance projects, you would typically fund with Pago. So we try to level that out a little bit, but yes, we would take that revenue, and would be able to buy debt with that, so you get your big projects earlier in the process.
Okay, so like a revenue bond for some of the new money?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you. All right, all right. And, and then for Mr. Hewitt, I think I sparked a question from Councilmember Thompson.
I don't know how you missed me, Mr. Mayor, but...
I didn't see you, my man. Dino had you, and Courtney Banks.
My, my question for you is, you referred a lot to the county system. How often is this gonna be reevaluated, since the county's reevaluation's only once every eight years?
Good question.
So this is, this is, this is, this was a completely separate initiative from the county's evaluation. It just so happened to line up when, when they were doing it. Some municipalities do this every four to five years, where they kind of go back and recalibrate the meter to make sure that they've not missed anything.
But help me understand, if you get your area, your area of square footage from the county, and if they only do it once every eight years, that means their database is not gonna be updated until once every eight years? So how are you gonna stay updated unless you do it once every eight years?
They, they redo their reevaluations every eight years, but they don't wait eight years to put new property on their, their rolls. So we, I mean, it's every year they're adding parcels.
So, so that, so furthermore, that means that you're not gonna be reevaluating everybody at the same time, then?
No, sir. I think what he's saying is, so if, if we go out and you build a, a new shopping center, the county is going to tax and bill you on the square footage, and they're also going to use as improvements, the parking lot as well. And they will upload that in real time, so that your new, your tax bill, and hopefully the impervious area that they load in the GIS will be available then. If I can use the mayor's example, he's put in a huge addition on his building, he's gonna put in a parking lot too, I think. And we're gonna definitely make sure we go out with fine-toothed comb afterwards, I'm using the staff we have available, because we're gonna do some drainage calculations today as well. So Adam, are you ready to go out? Okay. But that's how we capture that, as, in real time, as it goes along. But I think what we have here is, we assumed that the, the data, and we just went back and took a look, and so we were able to say that something that they may not have been, that may have been present but wasn't calculated, was in their database.
Yeah, and so what, what we've presented today is the best available data as far as impervious surface and square footage of...
Okay, thank you, Byron.
All right, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
I might need security to walk me out to the car after this. But we do not like to increase anything. I mean, I'm myself a, a residence here in our community. And again, I, I hate to increase anything. I would hate for my family to have to pay additional, but at the same time, I look at it like we're trying to provide a great service. And we saw just from previous slides where we have a flooding issue, and the only way to help with that is to increase. If there's another way, I would like to know, but I don't think that there's another way, because we need the funding to improve the flooding throughout our city. So, I mean, I'll go with, with another motion, but I think that we definitely need to consider increasing the fee, because again, it'd be beneficial for the entire community.
Security?
Look, well, I need two of them today to walk me out.
All right. Councilman Mahndros, is that some motion?
Motion.
All right.
I would like to move that forward, moves in consensus towards a tiered structure, but I'd also, the second part to that, I'd like to move it to one of our budget work sessions, to decide which, which one, because I think it may be a combination of option one, two, or three, that we ultimately like best, and today's probably not the day to do that, so...
And, and I like that, maybe if, council, if you're inclined to do that, Jeff can have some information about what, how much of that he could bond, and get, and, and accelerate some of the, those larger CIP projects versus not, so it may give us a little more insight on that, but, so I'm, I'm favorable to that, if there's a second on that.
The next work session?
All right.
Question for my thing, or can we just add it to that?
Talk to the...
Well, Mr. Mahndros, I guess, in addition to that, I think it's all part of the same conversation, Byron had spoken to some ways that we can mitigate the brunt of this being all on an individual business, and he shared some of those things, how to access them, and ways to just kind of address those kinds of concerns. Perhaps that can be included in this, especially if we're talking about, you know, changing the, dialing it up, that we also include, you know, in addition to that carrot, or addition to that stick, some, some of the carrots that exist.
So he's probably talking about credit for the, for the retention pond?
The fee credit.
The fee credits, and then, you know, if you feel it necessary, that, that what we're charging is, is still not near what it's costing us.
So you specifically refer to like adding a kind of educational component? Sure.
Well, well, to include, I guess, if this, if this passes, and it's the second by Councilmember Green, this is to bring it back to a budget work session to include...
Talk about...
Feedback from the debt, the debt scenario, projections, the fee credit, possibly if there's any kind of way to, let's say, I'm using the mall as an example, but to incentivize the mall to put a retention pond there. I mean, I'm sure they pay a lot in stormwater fees annually. Do they save over time if they invested to put and capture some more of that on site? But, but that, that, that sounds like a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on that?
Just as long as you're okay with that condition.
All right, and that is the amended version of that. All right.
Mr. Mayor, let me just make a question or a statement.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to wrap my brain around how this got started. And I believe Councilmember Mahndros helped me from, from wrong here. I thought we were, wanted to discuss more impervious areas in reference to swimming pools, driveways around residential areas. Am I correct, or...
I, I didn't catch that part, but...
Yes.
I think we can work towards that, but I... I think, I think it'd be good to institute this now, and if we want to look at doing that in the future, because it took us, I think we started this tiered conversation like four years ago on Stormwater Advisory Board. So if we don't do it now, it might take another five years to get those other sixty-five thousand...
I just remember us having that conversation, but I'm, I'm good with this, Mr. Mayor.
So, so I guess, if you unpack this, the first one is, do we believe we want to change our flat fee to a tiered system?
Yes.
Right? And if there's consensus to do that, then I think the work session just gets us which one of the, the three options of the tier that we want to go with, and what it includes, right? And so, and that's, that's, does that summarize it? All right.
And some information about the fees, and the credits, and the...
All of that.
Yeah, we got on it.
All of that, yeah. Okay, all right. If there are no further questions, council, I'll look to you for you.
Mr. Mayor? The only thing I was gonna say is that, on recommendations as well, it was updating the database for impervious area. That's...
I can add that as well?
Yeah.
All right. Council, I'll look to you for your votes on that. Councilmember McNair?
Agreed.
All right, thank you. All right, motion carries. All right, good job, y'all. Okay. Counsel, moving to six point oh eight three. Hazard mitigation grant program. Or six point oh three, rather.
Yep, I got it. That's me.
We'll go through this quickly.
Thank you.
All right. So this is a hazard mitigation grant program funding opportunity. We're gonna talk about structural elevation or buyout of damaged properties. So upfront, we are seeking consensus from council to pursue hazard mitigation funding to mitigate losses to repetitive loss structures in FEVIL. So briefly, I'm gonna define the hazard mitigation grant program, discuss the notice of funding availability, talk about the types of mitigation, and then summarize what repetitive loss structures in FEVIL are, and then present the process and next steps if you give consensus. So essentially, hazard mitigation grant program is FEMA-funded, following a program designed to reduce or eliminate future damages following a disaster. It's federally funded, but it's managed by North Carolina Department of Public Safety's Division of Emergency Management. We have previously received HMGP funding for both infrastructure projects and property acquisitions and elevation in the past, so this is a grant program we're familiar with. Just briefly, how does hazard mitigation differ from other mitigation grant funds? It differs from CDBG, because those must spend at least seventy percent of funds for low and moderate income persons. That does not apply to hazard mitigation. Flood mitigation, FMA, that's competitive. Things must align with the county's hazard mitigation plan, and there's a twenty-five percent non-federal cost share. So hazard mitigation differs from those two. So I want to talk about the notice of funding availability. The first one is for Tropical Storm Helene. You can see this NOFO was done in December of twenty-four. The primary focus of this funding availability is the declared counties, which you can see in the hatched areas. However, all other projects statewide are eligible, and they are going to prioritize residential and non-residential mitigation. So this is the first funding, notice of funding availability. The second one came out in early March for potential Tropical Cyclone Eight. Again, you can see the primary area is the declared counties on the coast. The secondary, again, all other projects statewide. And again, residential and non-residential mitigation projects are prioritized. So types of mitigation, first is the acquisition. This would be the purchase or buyout of a flood-prone home using FEMA and state funds from a willing homeowner at pre-disaster market value. The home would be acquired, demolished, the land is then deeded to the local community with deed restriction. So we acquired several properties after Hurricane Matthew that followed the same steps. The second is elevation. So basically, you're removing the structure from flood potential by raising it. So you physically have to raise an existing structure to, to two feet above the base flood elevation. So this is just a little diagram of what that would look like. I want to talk about repetitive loss structures, because that is our strategy for trying to get some of this hazard mitigation funding. We want to target the repetitive loss structures in FEVIL. There are currently forty-four structures in FEVIL that are designated as a repetitive loss. I believe forty-one are residential, and three are non-residential structures. And what, what is a repetitive loss structure? It has to have an NFIP insured, that is a National Flood Insurance Program. You have to be an NFIP insured structure that has had at least two paid flood losses of more than a thousand dollars each in any ten-year period. That's how you're designated a repetitive loss structure. Just to give two examples of the forty-four that I discussed earlier, these are two examples of what a repetitive loss structure in FEVIL is. You'll see the top one, there were five flood claims since Hurricane Matthew. You can see that the building value for this structure is two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. They have already had close to two hundred thousand dollars in flood payments paid to them. The second example, it's not as extreme, but you can see it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar structure, that has had almost sixteen thousand dollars in payments paid to them. So those are just examples of what a repetitive loss structure are. So a couple considerations for this, the state pays the local match, the city would not have to pay the local match. HMGP is an allocation, it's not a competition. So as long as there is funding available, and we can meet a positive BCA, we feel comfortable that we will get, receive the funding. There is statewide eligibility, and we've been told unprecedented funding of almost one point five billion dollars. There is no cap on the price of homes that can be acquired or elevated, because we will be submitting them all as one grant application. This is completely voluntary for property owners. They can, they can, they can apply to the city, we can submit it to the state, but they can withdraw the application at any time. Another consideration is, the city would take on the perpetual maintenance for the acquired properties when the structures are removed. So there's no future inhabitable structures that would be allowed to be placed on these acquired properties. So briefly, just want to talk about the net process and next steps. Really, today, we just want to gain consensus and provide awareness, and ask for consensus to move forward with this opportunity. If you give us the green light... If you give us the green light, we would reach out directly to these repetitive loss property owners to notify them of this funding opportunity. The property owner would then have to complete an application and submit to the city. We would then take all of the individual applications, evaluate them, make sure we have a positive BCA, and we, the city, would prepare a single application for consideration to submit to the state. I believe once we have better defined what that is, how many property owners want to participate, we come back to Council and tell you the actual amount of the grant to get further consensus before we actually do any submittals, but we have to have this submitted by October 31st of 2025, so we just want to request consensus to pursue this funding for the repetitive loss structures.
So did have a couple of questions on here, Byron. Councilman Benevente, and then Davis.
I was just prepared to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll circle back, same. So Lox Creek, some of those areas that were damaged repetitively, repetitively, are they in your 44 or 41 identified?
So we are not allowed to disclose what the properties are, but you can see from the map here, there are a few NFIP insured structures in the greater Lox Creek area.
Okay, and, and the criteria is what you mentioned, more than two claims in a 10-year period?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, all right, Councilman McGreen.
So you said that the owner would have to apply.
Yes, ma'am.
So in the past, I know that in the Lox Creek area, there was some funding available for homes that had been previously flooded, I'm not sure where it came from, it may have been CBDG money, I'm just not sure. But the, if the property was occupied by a tenant, you were not eligible, is there any, are there, are there restrictions on this money, I guess that's my big question?
I don't, I don't believe there's restriction to owner occupied or tenant occupied, I do recall, I believe it was back in 2020, we tried to see if we could use some CDGB money for the Lox Creek area, we sent surveys out, however, they did not meet the threshold for low to moderate income for that specific grant.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Byron, I think you said this, and I apologize if I misunderstood from earlier conversations, this is not only residential, it is, it also.
So, yeah, so of the 44 structures that are designated repetitive loss in Fayetteville, I think three or four are non-residential.
So it may also help commercial as well, thank you.
If they would like to participate.
Okay, all right, I'll go to Councilman Benevente.
Want to make the motion?
Yes.
I, I think I would defer to Councilmember Davis.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Benevente.
Of course.
Mayor, I would like to move, I move that we go forward with the pursuing of the hazardous mitigation grant program funding for repetitive loss structures in Fayetteville.
And I'll second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Benevente, discussion on that? All right, and so Byron, how do we do the application for, we submit a total number for all the projects that we're saying, or it, because the money comes to us, or do the, does the individual landowner have to do it?
We, we would, we would do it, the, the, so they, the individual property owner would receive the buyout, then there, the, the land would be transferred to the city, but as far as the application, the individual has to submit an application to the city, we then take those applications collectively and make one submittal to the state.
So again, how do we get this word out to make sure that people participate?
We're going to directly contact the 44 repetitive loss structures, property owners.
Okay, all right, all right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes on it. All right.
That is green for me, Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am, motion carries. All right, Council, good job, moving to 6.084, FAST Title VI Survey. Tiffany and Company, Tiffany's and Company.
I think this is 45 to 12 hours.
No.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Tiffany, No Transit Director, we are here today to provide our Title VI survey, our Fair Service Equity Analysis, this was done as a result of our most recent triennial review completed by our Federal Transit Administration, and so with me for our presentation today, I have Megan Matheny, Project Manager from RLS, and Jamie Walters, Transits Planner, and so there have recently been a lot of questions regarding FAST, like how we become more efficient, how we operate, how we change our structure, how we improve, and most of all, how do we transition to a system of choice, and so I think today's presentation will give us that ability, and so my hope is at the end of this presentation, we'll have an opportunity to continue to push towards becoming a system of choice. I need to get on the right presentation, right, I'm gonna get there.
Got it.
No.
Okay.
And so the purpose of this project is working down into four components, we're going to talk about our fair structure, the way it currently is set, our fair media, and fair media is just how people pay for their bus fares, we also will talk about our lowest ridership fixed routes, and then our lowest ridership holiday schedules. So we broke the presentation into five primary tasks, we're going to talk about a survey that we completed within our community, the demographic and socioeconomic analysis that we did, we're going to talk about different fair media options, again, how people pay for passes, we're going to talk about our current fair structure, and that overall analysis, and our service change, and any route modifications that we would like to present to you, so with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Matheny.
Thank you, Ms. Neal, and good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us today, it's a pleasure to be here with you. So as Ms. Neal stated, our fair and service equity analysis was broken down into five primary tasks, one of which was a comprehensive onboard survey effort, so the survey was effort, was administered over a two-week period in November, so the purpose of the study, or the survey effort was to analyze information obtained from a representative sample of passengers regarding several different components, so travel patterns, usage of FAST services, service payment methods or fair media, as Ms. Neal referenced, access to passes, and demographics. So the targeted sample size for both modes of service, so both modes include fixed route service and ADA, complementary para-transit, or Fast Track service, so we had a target sampling for each mode of service, but combined, the target sample was 420. I do want to recognize the FAST team because they exceeded the sample size by 37%, so we received a total of 577 responses. Why is this important? Because we really want to get information, valid data, as to a true representative of your current ridership base. So just a high-level overview of the responses, so we know that 56% of survey respondents, fixed route, use FAST services daily, and the primary trip purpose is work. The majority of fixed route survey respondents purchased their passes at the FAST Transit Center, and then their primary pass type, or the most commonly used pass type, was their one-day pass. For fixed route respondents, the majority of respondents ride a few times per week, followed by daily, work was also the primary trip purpose for the majority of survey respondents, followed by medical appointments. The majority purchased their pass at the FAST Transit Center, and the most common pass type used by participants was a 20-ride pass, followed by a one-ride pass. So we talked about, we surveyed all customers about their tolerance for an additional fair media, as Ms. Neal referenced, fair media is just a mechanism for paying for your services. So 79% of fixed route survey respondents indicated that they would be comfortable using a reloadable fare card, and 59% indicated they'd be comfortable paying for their services through mobile app. Similar to fixed route, 89% of Fast Track customers said they would use a reloadable fare card by, followed by 78% would be comfortable using a mobile app. So this data is important because it indicates the tolerance for different fair medias among your current customers. Okay, with respect to demographics, we conducted a demographic analysis, the purpose was to evaluate the user groups, the different types of user groups that are onboard FAST and compared, as compared to the FAST service area, because we really want to understand and identify minority populations, low-income populations, that could be desperately impacted by any fare increases, or fare adjustments, I should say, or route modifications, so that, the importance of that demographic analysis was pretty integral to, to our study. So we know that the overwhelming majority of FAST survey respondents were minorities, and we use the U.S. Census definition of minority, which is all races other than Caucasian or white. With respect to annual household income, combined, 61% of all survey respondents reported a yearly or annual household income of less than $30,000. So these different demographics, again, really were considered and analyzed, they were considered as we developed recommendations, which you'll see momentarily.
Now, you're saying, is that the only demographic that you took information from?
No, we had a variety of socioeconomic variables, and that was just one of them, so zero-vehicle households, licensed drivers, age, income, race, ethnicity. Okay. With respect to fare payment, the most popular pass among fixed route survey respondents was the one-day pass. For Fast Track, the majority, or over 50%, utilized a 20-ride pass. Now, this is important for projecting potential impact in fare box revenues for any pass adjustments or fare adjustments, which you'll see included under the recommendations. So the current fare payment options include cash upon boarding, that's upon the fixed, the fixed route buses, and passes also are sold at the FAST Transit Center and at four Charlie Sees locations within the FAST network. However, there are available options, pretty standard within the transit industry, that include smartphone apps, self-serve kiosk, reloadable fare cards, and tap-and-go. So in an introduction of any of the available options, which you see referenced here, will bring FAST closer to choice. So FAST identified 10 peer agencies in the 2022 Transit Development Plan, Planning Process, so the TDP, or Transit Development Plan, was adopted by Council in 2022, that plan does identify 10 peers, as you can see, these systems, but we also expanded that to include geographic peers due to their close proximity to FAST. So our full report has an analysis of all the 10 peers, but what you see here is we really focused on the regional, or the peers within the, the closest proximity to FAST. So as you can see, these systems have implemented cashless incentives that promote choice ridership. And they have additional fair media or methods for paying for services, they use Go Raleigh, Triangle, Greensboro Transit Agency, all use smart cards or reloadable fare cards in addition to a mobile app. Although you see three systems, geographic peers referenced, I do want to notate that our peer analysis did include Go Durham, but Go Durham is currently fare-free, they suspended fares in response to COVID, and fares remain suspended until June of 2025. So the current fare structure for FAST has been in place since April 2013. So as I mentioned, there have been no fare adjustments or changes since the time of implementation. What you see before you is a summary of the most frequently used fare types and the percentage of trips associated with the fare type in 2024. So this provides just an overview of the current fare structure with, we kind of teased out the pass types that yielded less than a percentage of utilization or ridership, so we just want to focus on the primary pass types that, that generated, or that most user, users currently, or most customers currently utilize. So as you can see here, the one-day pass, which is a, is a rate of $3, is the most commonly utilized pass among FAST customers in 2024 at 39%, and that's followed by a 30-day pass, so 15% of riders in 2024 utilize a 30-day pass. So we also took a look at the fare structure for all of the peers included in the TDP, but again, we, we wanted to focus really on the geographic peers for the purposes of, of today's presentation. So this comparison was explored during the fare structure analysis process, along with considerations about the potential impact that changing fares might have on FAST customers and potential customers. So as you can see, FAST's one-way fare and daily pass are similarly priced and/or, and/or are on the lower end compared to its peers. Okay, so as I mentioned, the geographic peers include the Go Systems, Go Raleigh, Go Durham, Greensboro Transit Agent, Agency, as well as Asheville Transit Agency and Cape Fear. So at $1.25 for a base fare, one-way fare for FAST were pretty consistent on the lower end of, similarly priced on the lower end as compared to the geographic peers. So FAST currently has a fare policy recovery goal, in 2013, a goal of achieving a 20% fare recovery was established. 20% goal can include, but is not limited to, revenues generated from transit advertising and Greyhound leases, as well as fare box. So when we talk about your, your fare recovery goal, it includes the additional revenue sources that were mentioned, what you receive from transit advertising, those unencumbered funds, what leases through Greyhound, as well as what's recovered, or what's generated through the fare box and through pass sales. So in 2013, the operating recovery rate was 17%, with fares recovering to, recovering 15%, 15 and a half percent. So the goal was 20% fare policy recovery by FY 2020. So where are we today? At the end of, or the close of FY 24, our operating recovery for FAST was 7.5%, and again, that operating recovery does account for passenger fares and other system-generated revenues, such as leasing, advertising, advertising. Fares alone accounted for 6.15% of that overall recovery of 7.5%. So as you can see, for, at least for FY 24, the recovery goal, or the, the recovery fell below the current goal. Yes, sir.
Question on that, we had suspended fares because of COVID, and we didn't start that back, what year was that when we started that back?
In FY In FY 23? FY 24.
So that factored in, the, the, the collection of fares this, this, this shortage year? So in other words, we only recovered seven percent of it and we, when the goal was to recover twenty percent because the rest of it is subsidized, right? So even with collecting of it, we were still short that much?
Correct.
Another way to look at it is we've never
Increased.
No, we've never met the goal of twenty percent.
No, I'm saying, but it went from seventeen, now it's down to seven. But we've also never increased the fares, so ten years costs went up, but
Absolutely.
collections, that gap spread, okay?
Exactly. Yes, sir. Okay, in, any further questions right now? Oh, no, no, we're not, we're
No, I don't, I don't have any.
Okay, perfect. So what this tells us is two things. Council may want to consider a revision in its current policy to better align with the existing conditions regarding its fare recovery or adjust fares to, to, to be more in line with an obtainable policy. So I know this is a lot of information. We're going to walk through this. And then after this slide, we're going to pause. We'll, we'll break for questions and then we just have a couple, a few more slides regarding route modifications that Ms. Neal will address and then we'll conclude. So what you see here before you is the potential revenue impact of the most popular passes. As part of our analysis, we encompass, we included several, several different or all the pass types within the, the Fast fare structure. But what you see presented today, we consolidated that to just really tease out the most popular passes. So we applied scenarios of twenty percent, forty percent, and sixty percent price adjustments, again, to those most common pass types. So decades of transit industry research tells us that for every ten percent increase in fare prices, there could be a three percent decrease in ridership. The potential revenue impacts with no ridership loss and with the industry standard of expected ridership loss of three percent for every ten percent increase are presented before you. It is worth noting that when a ridership loss is experienced after fare increases are implemented, that loss usually temporary, that, the loss is usually temporary and ridership recovers over time. So that recovery period can range from several months to two to three years. However, it's extremely important to note that through our analysis, due to the strength of the ridership base for Fast, Fast recovery time for any fare increase is anticipated to be quicker than it would be for similar, similarly sized communities. So we have the twenty, forty, and sixty percent price adjustment applied to the two most common passes with increase in revenues for revenue projections if a, if there was no ridership loss. So best-case scenario, you implemented a fare adjustment and realized no decrease in ridership. However, worst-case scenario, if an implementation of a fare adjustment or a fare adjustment were to be implemented and a ridership loss was to be realized, we have also captured that increase in revenue with and without that ridership loss. So at the bottom is the total fare box impact, or actually it's the net, was the total and the net. So if you were to implement or council were to adjust fares, let's just say by, by twenty percent and without an increase, with an increase in revenue and no ridership loss, you could potentially yield, yield one hundred and fifty-four thousand additional revenues through your fare box. If a six percent decrease in ridership were to be realized with a twenty percent fare adjustment, you could anticipate on yielding about a hundred thousand in additional revenues beyond what you're currently recouping through your fare box, recouping an, an additional a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand under that twenty percent scenario. So I'm going to pause here. As I mentioned, I know this is a lot of data and information and we'll pause here for any questions.
I do have a couple. So Councilmember Benavente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess we'll start with just questions before I get into discussion. Your recommendation, one of the recommendations is potentially a twenty percent increase to fares, correct?
That, yes.
And what would that translate into, again, to the actual? Like, so if I wanted to get on the bus, right now I'm paying how much?
A dollar twenty-five.
And so it would go up a quarter?
Mm-hmm.
Eight dollars, so. No, that's not what I'm asking. Let me ask these people. Let me ask these people, sir. So if we decide not to go up that twenty percent, how much more of our general fund would have to subsidize that seven percent cost?
So we would ask Mr. Yates if he could assist with that?
Where's on the screen? So when he tells me a different number, you'll be wrong. Where's, no, no, where? No, no, that's not my question.
So your question, let me be sure I understand the question. You're saying if we didn't increase the twenty percent, what's the subsidy look like from the general fund?
Is that currently on the slide, that number?
So on this, it looks like the, the initial impact of the first twenty-five, or twenty percent of the first quarter is going to be about a hundred thousand dollars or ninety-nine thousand dollars. So it's that first line that says total fare box impact, all I believe is, that's right, right? The net impact after the leakage.
So we'll have to pay how much again?
It would, it would be a, if you increased, if you increased the fare.
No, sir. I, I do not want to increase the fare. I keep the fare the same. How much, obviously, that, that means that there's at least seven percent of yield that we're currently getting that we're no longer getting.
Assume, so you don't have this right in place, so it's not a loss of revenue.
So I guess the general fund puts in X is what he's asking, and it would be a hundred thousand dollars less than that with the first increase.
It's the to, you just take the total cost and the total revenue. So if you increased it, the general fund
Puts in less.
Would put in less. If you don't increase it, the general fund has to put in more.
Or continue putting in more.
When you say more, when you say more, what's that dollar figure?
Under this scenario, it'd be the ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, that's not my, that's not bad at all. Okay, thank you.
Now, you, you understand what he's saying. So i-if, if it's subsidized eighty percent and, and our gap is twenty and, and we're collecting seven percent, then that means the general fund is paying the other thirteen percent. So that may be three, four hundred thousand dollars or whatever. So he's saying that that amount is reduced by this if you increase that by these numbers.
So we, we, like you said, we already pay
We've always had to subsidize.
Exactly. So what, whatever that dollar figure is, it would have to go up another ninety-nine if we do not raise.
No, he's just basically saying, they're saying you can close that gap with a twenty percent increase and you, and that amount would be about a hundred thousand dollars, ninety-nine thousand. If you did a forty percent increase, it would be a hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
So that, so I'm, I guess I'm trying to say, I'm trying to frame it in a different direction. Because honestly, guys, this is an investment in our future. So I don't look at it as us subsidizing anything. I think we're, for the first time, needing to give the money. I want to put a lot more than a hundred thousand. I want to start talking about how many millions of dollars we're going to be putting into transit.
So then you need some phases, not even
Not necessarily. I'm saying that our general fund right now is meant to do what? It's meant to improve the wellness and safety of the entire city. And when I think about people's issues with people supposedly speeding, people supposedly driving without what they're supposed to, when, when you get those kinds of charges, you know what happens at the DMV? They make it to where you can never get your license again. Now are those people going to stop driving or are they just going to drive regardless? I think about it from a public safety standpoint. When we talk about how many, can we get our young people from these colleges to come spend some money downtown to get around? Most cities with colleges like we do, college towns, they have direct express lanes, straight to their downtown, straight to places of interest, direct lines. If we want to get to that place, if we want to get to that point, we've got to talk not just in the tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars and making up gaps. We've got to talk about how many millions of dollars we're ready to build up our transit. So I don't want to lose ridership if, if that's on the table. I'm willing to go up the quarter on a daily if we need to. But I really want to get to a bigger conversation and stop nickel and diming what could be the answer to most of Fayetteville's problems, which is a robust mass transit system.
Well, just to clarify, Councilman, the portion you're talking about in this quarter discussion is about seven percent of their funding. About two-thirds of their funding, about sixty-five, between sixty-five and sixty-seven percent-ish comes from the general fund already. So we're, we're talking, when you're talking about funding in millions,
Sure.
we are funding in millions from the general fund, so.
Of their fifteen, of their fourteen million dollar budget?
Of their fourteen million dollar budget, nine million dollars of it, give or take, comes from the general fund already. So just to be clear, I just want you to be clear on the magnitude of the general fund contribution.
Yeah, I want another six million dollars from our general fund going towards us.
That's a budget conversation, so get your arguments ready.
But it, it factors into this because if we're going to decide whether or not to go up a quarter, which I'm willing to, that's a stick. That's something that we're hitting our, our citizens with. I think that they're going to talk about routes, probably reducing them, and they're going to talk about a longer wait time for certain routes. Those are three sticks. I haven't seen the carrot yet. And so if we want to start talking about that, this is the time to talk about that. It's, it's hard for me to say, we're going to raise the rates, we're going to lessen the routes, and we're going to make you wait longer. And then we wonder why no one wants to ride. So we kind of have to have both conversations right now.
Well, I think, I think the part I'm talking about is increasing the amount that comes in from the general fund. Right now, they're asking, she's bringing us back an assessment before you can legally change the fare. I think you had to do this assessment, correct? And so now it is, this is the presentation of it. I, I'm sure you're not asking for a decision point today whether we go increase or twenty or forty or sixty percent. You're basically presenting information today, correct?
Presenting the information, yes.
But you want, but, so you're saying that if I say I made a commotion to go up twenty percent, you guys don't want that?
They take all money, but I, I guess, I guess that factors into the bigger budget picture, is what I'm getting.
Exactly my point. So that's exactly what I'm saying. It does factor into the bigger budget.
That's not today, though. The budget meeting.
So then we're not, we're not going to answer this today?
I mean, look, if you, if you want to take a blind shot and say, I'm just going to increase fares on, on the riders by forty percent, fine. Well, so I'm just saying the six million dollar general fund is probably a more robust discussion.
Well, I, I think for me, they all kind of fit together. And, and that's why I'm asking my colleagues today that I think our Fast leadership came to these recommendations not easily. I think that they're saying twenty percent is necessary. I think they're saying reducing certain routes is necessary and a thirty-minute wait time is necessary. I don't think they would ask us for that if they didn't think it was, or else, you know? But if we're going to do those three sticks, I want to see some carrots. And I, I want to talk about that today before we do those three things. So if now's not the time because people have other questions, I want you all to do that. But if we want to make a motion on these three matters, I hope that we can add some, some incentives as well or some things for our riders to look forward to, to improve our Fast transit. And, and I've got some recommendations on what those could be.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Benavente. So I wanted to speak to something real quick and I don't know, how many other slides do you have? Is this the conclusion of, of that? So let us, I'll go, I'll go to the question I have, Councilmember Thompson. And then we'll pause, let them finish because it may be some other steps to this conversation. So I, I guess my question was, one, what does the overall ridership demographic look like? Income-wise, not race, not any of that stuff. I'm, I'm just meaning, who's riding and using our system now?
In terms of annual household income, as I mentioned, the, the sixty-one percent earn about less than thirty thousand? I'm going to back up just really quickly. So we have that. Okay, so right, right here, so about thirty-six percent of the survey respondents, so those five hundred over, reported earning their household less than fifteen thousand. And then twenty-four percent earn between fifteen thousand up to twenty-nine, just below thirty thousand.
So all of them are low to moderate income, the, the majority, rather?
Correct.
Okay. And so my question is, as you're making a ridership of choice, how do you expand your customer base? Because the one complaint I hear about is that it takes so long to, if, you know, time is money to a lot of people. And if you're going to say, let me leave the car at home because I want to cut down on emissions or whatever, how do you have, is that a part of this presentation?
Right.
All right, so let me not get ahead of myself.
So the Transit Development Plan, again, that was approved, identifies in three defined steps on rebuilding service, step one to pre, pre-pandemic levels. And if you'll bear with me just a moment, I'm going to pull this slide up because that's direct, directly answers your question.
Gotcha. All right. And before you go into that, I want to catch Councilmember Thompson and then we'll let you all finish and then we'll circle back on questions. So you may approach him, press turn since.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Referring to the slide that you just asked about the ridership, Mr. Mayor, I want to agree with my colleague to my right and I also want to disagree with my colleague to my right. The slide that the mayor just asked about was ridership. The three things that we have talked about here today were county property taxes going up. We talked about stormwater prices going up. Now we want to talk about transition fees going up. Who's it affecting the most? According to your slide, it's people that make less than thirty thousand dollars a year. So although I may disagree with him, I do agree that we should increase the amount of money we take out of the general fund to put into transit without a increase. So that's one thing that I would propose, Mr. Mayor, because you can't kick a man when he's down. And you, you, we, we, we keep kicking him one way or another with these small increment fees. And for an individual family that makes thirty thousand dollars, whether it's eight, sixteen, or twenty-four dollars a year, that's a lot of money though. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I want to go back to that same slide where they were talking about, it was what, thirty-four percent that was under the, the income? So my question is, do we have the age? Did, did we get the age of, of the, I, I would be interested in that because in, in my mind, I'm sitting there thinking, is that social security? That they're just living off of social security and are they just going to the hospital? Are they going to the senior center? Or is it, you know, or is it people that have disability? That it's in that, when I'm looking at the, at what they're making per year, that's what goes to my head. So is it that they're all trying to get kind of to the same place? And that we need to rethink that? That, that, that's my biggest question. And is that going to come in, in our thing? Or do you have that?
So we do not have age. We did capture that in our survey effort. We do not have it on the presentation.
I, I would be very interested in knowing that. If you could email that to me so we could like dissect it through that. Thank you.
All right.
Please email it to everybody. I'm sorry.
So our current, our current plan is in complete alignment with the current TDP. Again, that, that was approved in 2022. So step one of the plan is ninety-one percent complete. Step two focuses on service improvements, which is why, why we are here today. And we will talk briefly about step three, which is to expand service momentarily. So the three main, main priorities under improved services, and again, this information is outlined and encapsulated in the TDP. They are revise the five lowest ridership routes, increase frequency on the five highest ridership routes, and adjust service levels on lowest ridership holidays. So these are the three priorities for improvement, service improvements under step two of the TDP. Step three, expand service is that, the service expansion is in step three, including regionalization and service to Hope Mills, Spring Lake, and Fort Bragg, as well as the airport should be considered after the completion of step two service improvements. A strategic or phased approach to transitioning Fast to a regional system is recommended. However, there are few things that need to be considered or should be considered first. Next slide. Next slide. So for service expansion under, yes.
Because I don't, I have tried to advocate for ridership to the airport. So how do we know that it's not going to increase ridership if we only do step two before we get to step three?
So that is a great question because a couple items, very important to note, is a lot of it is due to capacity constraints, what we'll touch on momentarily. However, for service improvements, we want to increase frequency. So that in provides a greater level of convenience to your current customers. And then convenience also helps to attract choice riders. So you want to take care of home, you want to strengthen what you're already doing, currently doing with your existing network before you expand into re uh uh into a regional system. So we can't take care of home first under step two improvements before encroaching on an expansion.
I understand, but if we already have data that states that we have people waiting on a ride at the airport, how to come, how do you not contribute that to increase ridership and only using it for step three and not two?
And so that also goes back to capital. So we talk about capital equipment, which we'll touch on momentarily, but also personnel, human capital. So in order to expand service, I know that there's a deficit or there was a deficit particularly um in the workforce, particularly in COVID. I know that FAST leadership has decreased that deficit. But in terms of human capital, you want to be sure you have the resources and infusion of funding as well as the human capital to sustain any new service expansion.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll hold my questions to the end. I'm sorry.
So next slide. Okay. All right, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Walters.
Good afternoon. I'm going to briefly cover the five lowest performing routes and the proposed modifications that we are proposing to increase ridership. So this current slide is just a reference to show how our route structure is now on the left versus the modifications proposed on the right. So this is Route eleven, which runs from Cross Creek Mall to Cape Town Valley North on Andrews Road. It's one of our longest routes time wise with a ninety minute frequency, and it has the lowest ridership of any of our routes. The proposed modification would remove Route eleven service from Ramsey Street and Country Club Drive, both of which are already served by other routes, and would bring back service to Seabrook Road Langdon Road area. This is Route ten. Uh, it runs from Cross Creek Mall uh out to West Regional Library off to Century Circle. Uh, we would be repurposing the service on Strickland Bridge Road from Fisher Road to Century Circle to provide service to Fisher Road and the Bingham Road area, which has a higher population. This is Route seventeen, which runs from Tubel Lane to Cross Creek Mall. Uh, we would be proposing to increase the ninety minute frequency to sixty minutes by removing service from Morganton Road, from the Morganton Road section, which spans from Bonanza to Cross Creek Mall. For Route nineteen, uh, this route runs from Cross Creek Mall to the South Post PX on Fort Bragg. Uh, we are excited to have the potential to add service to Santa Fe Drive, the Military Business Park, and Amazon Fulfillment Center. Uh, this community is growing, and we are looking forward to establishing a transit presence there. And lastly for me, Route thirty one, uh, which runs from Ireland Drive to Walmart on Gillespie Street. We are not proposing modifications for this route as those modifications would adversely impact low income and minority residents.
So, Council, we are ready to bring it home. And so we want to talk about a few things that we recommend. When we talk about, again, fair media, we're just talking about how we pay for passes, right? So we'd like to have a three year or a phased approach in introducing new fair media. Currently now, you can pay for cash or buy paper passes. We'd like to introduce what our community said they have a tolerance for, which is reloadable fare cards in kiosks. We'd also like to introduce fare capping. Fare capping is just having that electronic electronic means, which it could be on your phone or it could be a fare card. Once you reach a certain threshold for a pass, it caps it. So for example, a three day pass now is currently three dollars. If you were to buy two one ride passes, which are a dollar twenty five each, that's two fifty. If you were to try to buy a third one, instead of the system charging you three seventy five, it would cap at three dollars. So that third swipe would only charge you fifty cents. The second year, we would discontinue cash on buses. One of the things that hurts our on time performance is waiting for persons on buses to put pennies, nickels, and dimes in. It takes a lot of time. It's also very expensive for us to count cash on a daily basis and have someone to assist us by transporting cash to the bank. So in year two, we'd introduce a new fair media, uh, excuse me, we would implement that new fair media that we introduced on year one. We would just introduce it, but this year we would actually implement it and allow our customers to use it as well as implementing fare capping. And in year three, the only way you'd be able to use cash with FAST is at the kiosk or either at Carley C's locations. Those are the only ways that we would allow cash, but it still would provide our customers an opportunity to use cash. And again, we'd like to introduce the mobile app and really continue progressing fast forward. So another recommendation we have is, again, we talked about our fares and a potential fare increase. One of the things we'd like to look at is restructuring our five day pass. Currently, our five day pass is one of our most underutilized passes. If you think about it, if the average person works five days a week, the weekend, if they only have a five day pass, they can't go anywhere without buying a new pass. A seven day pass would allow them to pay for going to work and then allow them to utilize our system for free, quote unquote, uh, with that seven day pass and allow them to enjoy our community. Service modifications, we talked a little bit about. Ms. Walters told you about our five ridership routes. We are confident that with these route modifications, with your support, that we could increase our ridership of what uh our community is desiring. One of the things that we don't speak about a lot is FAST is busting out the seams on five routes. We have two routes that we ran pre-COVID, that we had, once COVID hit, we shut them down and only ran one bus on those routes. Right now, those routes in certain periods of the day, when we have a lot of uh persons at bus stops, those buses are tight, and you know people don't want to move, it can be chaos. Uh, we hope not to have to leave anyone, but obviously we have a certain capacity on buses. So we're asking for your support in reinstating some of these routes that need an additional bus on these routes. Uh, we have some routes that we shut down as a result of COVID, uh, after COVID, because we did not have the human capital, but now we are back. Uh, we're also asking for an additional route, which is Route fourteen, as that route is uh increasing in ridership daily. Last but not least, I want to end here with holiday service. FAST puts out a lot of holidays, a lot of service on holidays. Three of our lowest ridership holidays are Martin Luther King Memorial Day and Labor Day. If you look at our peers, some of them don't put out any service on those holidays. Some of them put down Sunday service, put out Sunday service on holidays. Uh, one of the things that is unique uh that I've seen, as this is the fifth system that I've worked for, is usually there's a tier from weekday, then it goes down to Saturday, and then it goes down to Sunday. With FAST, we put out a lot of service Monday through Friday and almost the same amount of service on Saturday. So because we have low ridership on these routes, we are recommending to eliminate and or reduce service on these holidays. We are putting buses out, and they are empty on these holidays. Questions or concerns? I open the floor, and before I do, Mayor, I would like to recognize Mr. Hank Graham, our director, executive director of FAMPO, who's also in the building as well. So I'm subject to your questions.
All right, do have a couple. Uh, thank you for that. Question is, to implement these changes, uh, which is a service enhancement, do you have the estimated cost? So in other words, if you change uh low performing or weak performing routes and make them more direct like you showed. So if you implemented all these recommendations, that takes up the service level, and that costs us an additional what?
Those recommendations that we have, um, we could currently use the current structure that we have in place today.
So, Council, as we consider this, right, um, I think I would like to see the results if she increases ridership by increasing the experience. You know, if you make it more convenient to pay, you do all of those things, you use kiosks, you use uh more direct routes to go from point A to point B. You stop putting buses on the road at times that you don't have anybody on it. All of your recommendations, if you follow that, uh, could yield an increase, which which basically is the goal, and it might change that overall number. Right now, we're just thinking, let me fill the gap with the current situation. But we haven't increased, or to see the benefit of making these changes, which I think are very good changes, that seems like it brings us from our from our older model up into a more current structure. So so I would I would ask for that uh to be considered before we throw money at it. Let's see what the the increased service enhancement. And of course, we know whatever we don't collect, that we've got to cover it by general fund anyway. But she's saying she's got enough in the current structure to do it. All right, I'll go with Councilmember Benevente and Hondros and Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Neal or whoever's manning the post, could you go back to um, we talked about expanding services like a step two? Or that step three? Okay, great. What was right before that?
Improving.
Yeah, that's right. So Mayor Colvin, I mean, I agree that they came to these recommendations very diligently, and I'm not um dismissing any of them out of hand um to include the increase in the feed necessarily. I I'm not against that. I would rather not, but you know, I I understand where they're coming from with it. But I don't want to think about it as throwing money at the situation. I really want us to start talking about this in terms of investing in what really ought to be like a five year, ten year goal. And I don't want us to wait five to ten years before we decide to make, in my opinion, an investment that is just, in every other city where they've done it upfront, they've they've gotten the return on the investment. So let's do all of these things, but I don't want to wait for the results of this in two to three, four, five years and then say, oh, wow, let's do the next thing. If it's possible, can you go to step three again? I think some of this stuff can happen simultaneously, all of those things that you talked about. And to get us on the road to getting a fly fa direct, you know, not direct, but you know, it's a route uh and some of these other municipal um participation, um, we know we've got to have the data to support sort of what I feel like is obvious. But i- if if there was an opportunity to conduct a different kind of survey, specifically as it relates to expanding services, is there something like that already in the works or something that we could ask for today?
And thank you for bringing bringing that up because we would recommend a phased approach or a strategic approach to expanding service. So the first phase would be a feasibility study for capital expansion. As Ms. Neal referenced, uh, in, as illustrated on the aerial view, they are, have already outgrown their operations and maintenance facilities. So if we're talking about a regional expansion or expansion to regionalism, you would need the capital, uh, capital in terms of facilities to support that moving forward. So one would be the feasibility study for capital expansion. And then the second would be an analysis, once you've identified a potential location for expansion, really taking a look at the commuting patterns around your new facility. And also, uh, 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 most particularly around your new new facility, and then design your services around that current needed.
Question for that, are you speaking to the regional expansion? Are you speaking to phasing in all of the other recommendations, some of the other stuff?
The regional.
Okay, okay. So you said just that specifically. You said feasibility study followed by a what now?
A feasibility followed by an analysis of your, the commuting patterns.
And then if you go back to step two again, I'm sorry. When you talk about improving our existing services, I didn't hear much discussion about shelters. Because I know that right now we're sort of um beholden to a T P R grant.
So I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Neal.
I'm saying the acronym wrong. What kind, what what pays for our current um shelter growth?
Our apportionment. We use our apportionment funding that we get annually. And so we are, as you can see, uh, in the downtown area, we've already started modernizing and updating our shelters. We uh received those shelters a few months ago, so we put those out. We have an order coming in in May, then we have another infusion of shelters coming in in August, so.
And we we're qualifying to pay for those shelters because there's X amount of riders there.
Yes.
But but those 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 list of standards to qualify for that money, where's that money coming from again?
FTA.
FTA. Thank you. I was way off of my words. FTA. So our, is, I would, I would be interested in also finding some kind of study that um considers areas that may not meet maybe the high bar that um FTA uh is requiring, but certainly just from your own experience, from ridership, from your uh staff and others, and even from the community. We we hear a demand for more shelters and how that would have an impact, positive impact on ridership. Is there some kind of s- surveying or studying that could be done on? You know, right now, FTA is doing ten shelters every two years, that we could bump that up to fifteen or maybe even twenty if the council thought that general funds could be made available for at least these many other locations. What would that look like?
So let me clarify that. FTA doesn't set service standards. That's done locally.
Okay.
So council has approved uh the service standards that we have in place. So if that is something that wanted to be revised, that's a local decision. That's not an FTA decision.
Interesting. Okay. So if if, so then maybe just to rephrase my question then, is there a way to calculate what an adjustment to our standards are to maybe grow that number that you just said of, you know, five to ten in the next couple of years?
Yes, sir.
Is that something that could be incorporated into a feasibility study on on expansion? Because certainly if we're expanding the routes or expanding the the potential locations for shelters, could that be included in that?
Yes, sir. We can consider that as well.
Okay. Well, I'll stop my questions there. I just have discussion at a certain point, Mr. Mayor, because I think I said it earlier, the recommendations that they're making, I think, are good, but they're going to have an impact on ridership. I would love to be able to advertise that we're not just making these adjustments, but we're also future planning.
Uh, yeah, I mean, and let me, let me clarify something that you brought up. Mine is not to the exclusion of saying it doesn't need investment, right? What I'm saying is that if there's a way to fix the experience, and hopefully you go from, how many riders we have a year?
Roughly, one point six, about one point six. We're actually up seventy seven thousand passenger trips from twenty nineteen, and we do not have any nighttime service.
Well, you know, you know what? Now, when I was here, and I'll I'll say a lot of this is from, you know, your vision, your leadership, the system looks better, right? The buses are more attractive. The pro, it's all about the experience.
Yes, sir.
So now if you take someone who has a choice to whether to use it or not, or to catch Uber, it it makes it, it makes the experience better. If I get on it and I get to where I'm going in a reasonable amount of time, I tell somebody and I promote it. And and I think we've got to work on building that part of it also. And then whatever that costs to 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 do that, I'm I'm okay. I think that's a separate conversation. But if you go from one point six to two million riders, how does that impact that number that we're that we that we're taking out the out of the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Versus starting with taking money out of the general fund before we know how the changes take place. If you can do it simultaneously, I'm okay there too. So I just wanted to clear that up. All right, but um, uh, go to Councilmember Hondros and Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Neal and 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 friends. Uh, great presentation. I have a lot of questions. Um, when we talk about, when we talk about transit, what is more important? Ideally, we'd like to have both, but is more fares important or ridership? If we could only have one?
I think additional ridership will yield you more fares, right?
And also more grant funding, right?
Correct. Traditionally, your apportionment, you know, the federal formula, I'm sorry. It was challenging. I I guess I'm vertically challenged, so.
You and I both do the same.
So to answer your question, I I I would say ridership because ridership is going to yield you more.
I would agree. Um, so we established earlier the, if I remember correctly, fourteen million was the total budget for transit, nine millions general fund, is that right? So how many, this may be a Director Neal question, how many um total uh employees do we have on that in the department? And then how many, can you break out drivers versus everybody else?
About a hundred and twenty six um total employees. We have about eighty five total operator positions.
So then you got thirty or forty other positions.
Right, yes, between maintenance, admin, and operation support.
Yep. Thank you. Um, so this may be a ACM Yates question. Out of the thirty dollars we pay for our tag renewal fee, how much, if any, of that thirty dollars goes to transit? Is it all thirty, part of the thirty?
Uh, no, sir. It's five, five dollars by statute is required to go to the local transit system. So five goes to the transit system, five goes to the general fund. Then the other twenty goes to fund your public infrastructure bonds and uh public infrastructure programs.
So five dollars of the thirty goes to transit? So $5 of the 30 goes to transit, how much does that generate?
About 600 and, um, about $670,000.
670K?
Six hundred, six ninety.
More or less. Uh, okay, we'll say 690. Thank you. Um, what other, besides fares and besides grants, and besides that $5 on the renewal or the registration, what other income do we have? Like have we looked at, can we, can we max, have we maxed out like wrapping the buses? Advertising on the bus, in the bus, on the transit center? Is there, is there opportunity to do more of that maybe?
Yes, sir, that's why we are, um, I think one of the slides shows our infotainment where we're trying to put screens in buses to advertise. We're also looking at advertising at the transit center on some of the shelters within the transit center, you can advertise there. We have advertising that you can do inside the bus. The fixed route buses, the larger buses, it is really hard to get any advertising space because those are always, always utilized. Um, we do not wrap brand-new buses for a year, uh, but anything after that, we do. But we are trying to explore as many other, um, funding opportunities.
We should definitely max that out.
Yes, sir.
And even stuff like, uh, I think there's some unused show space at, at, um, at the multimodal center. I mean, if we can, I know it's an investment, finishing out that space and potentially having leasing come. I mean, I'm in for all of that. And then, so I'm okay with recommendations on slides 28 through 34. My concern is on slide 17, and I don't know if that's incorporated in, um, in the recommendations or not. But the potential, the positive impact of additional fares in the way of money, but the potential, um, con to raising fares of, of loss of ridership. Uh, and I don't know if that's the only slide, but i- is that, um, I guess what I'm asking, is part of the recommendations, if we voted on approving all, accepting the report and approving the recommendations, does that automatically, um, approve a rate increase as well?
Yes, sir, we're asking for a 20% uh, increase in fares across a three-year period.
So what would that do to the daily ride, the, the 30-day pass? And is that all on, what slide is it on so I can get to it?
That one, so if we were looking to do a fare increase on a one-ride pass, it would go from 125 to column three, which would be 150. A one-day pass would go from 3 to $3.60. And then a 30-day pass would go from $40 to $48. Those are just the most popular passes, but of course, we would look at a increase across the board.
And then, yeah, so that's my concern. Um, I mean, I like all the other recommendations, but I think the negative impact, like I think, um, the one partner there, um, was saying like one of the routes, if we, um, eliminated it or, or lessened it, it would affect the, the least among us, right? Like the lower-income folks. I think if we look at, or did the consultants have a number of, out of all the ridership, what, uh, what was like their median household income? I think the one was like 30,000, but is that for all?
Yes, yes.
So I mean, when you're looking at a, a city and a county where median household income is about what, 58,000? And the average for the ridership is 30, I mean, I would be, I got reservations and concerns about any fee increase, that's just me. So I agree, we need more money to fund the transit system. I don't know that the fares as well, I would like to get the advertising, I'd like to do, you know, maybe even more of a general fund contribution than the fare increase. I mean, that's, I, I'm just speaking for myself, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you, Ms. Tiffany, for that presentation. And you ladies, it's a great presentation, uh, just two questions. Uh, I know we're getting electric buses.
I'm sorry to say.
And of course, I tell them all the time, I got a Wayne memory, I pretty much remember everything. Uh, how is that going to reduce our cost? And is that number factored in to this report?
No, it is not factored into this report. Um, the consultant that we work with and are currently working with is asking us to wait two years before we really start to talk about what a reduction in cost will be. Obviously, we wouldn't be paying for diesel, but you are paying for the electricity, right? Um, the few systems that we have, uh, discussed with electric buses, their preventive maintenance has drastically decreased uh, over the two-to-three-year time period thus far. So we're very hopeful that it would help us decrease, but I've been warned to shy away from a number just yet.
Well taken, uh, my second question is, uh, you know, I love your bus drivers. I go out there, I talk to them and I ride the bus every now and then, and, uh, I talk with your staff often. Uh, with these changes, we're not going to lose any staff, are we? Because I know it took a long time to get 100% on our bus drivers.
No, we don't anticipate losing any of our operatives. They're actually as excited about getting the new buses, about having electro, electric buses. So I, we don't anticipate losing any.
Well, and I guess I'll make a motion, if anybody else has any other questions, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ma- make a motion that we do approve all these said items and see if Ms. Tiffany and her staff can come back in about six months. If we do not raise the fee, the 20, 40, or 60%, to see if ridership improves to compensate for the increase of 20, 40, 60%.
All right, sounds reasonable to me, that's a motion by Councilmember Thompson, and a second. Second, about Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, we've discussed this, time to vote.
Mr. Mayor, and I don't mind making this a separate motion just to keep things simple, but, um, we did discuss, and I hope, um, Councilmember Thompson would agree that a feasibility study regarding expansion is what it's going to take to get a bus to the airport. Um, that an analysis of such a, uh, capital expansion is what's going to, again, get us more shelters and things like that. So again, I'm okay with, um, approving all three. I know you only said two out of the three, but if we're going to do at least two out of the three, can we also talk about the future? Um, I can make that a separate motion, I would certainly appreciate being able to include it in, uh, Councilmember Thompson's motion. But, uh, I just wanted to make that point really quickly.
Uh, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do not mind amending my motion as long as we take the staff's recommendation, as she stated, to do step two first, then come back with a feasible study to step three.
Before three.
Sir?
Yeah, two kind of comes before three.
Yes, they come back to three with a feasible study to see how we can move either the Spring Lake Hope Mills into the airport.
Uh, and then that's fine, or what, how, what's the time period on step two?
Says on here, 2031 to 32, doesn't it?
I'm sorry?
It takes some time, if we're looking at everything in the TDP, it, it would take us years with our current structure in place.
It says 20 to 25, look at it, can y'all turn back to that?
Yes, sir.
That's it, right there.
So, I, I guess I have some concerns about that because I don't under, I'm not understanding why we cannot calculate the things that I feel like FAMPO is working on now. Um, that we're talking about regional, um, anytime that the state delegation comes down, we talk about, all they tell us is this. As long as it's regional and you tell us how much it costs, let, give us something to help you guys with. Like, I, I guess I just don't know why we would wait, how many years, 2031?
W- well, she's saying this is their projection to complete it, right?
If we only give them this amount of money.
Right, but what I'm saying, I don't think it's all money, there's some, some work that has to be done because you've got other jurisdictions that, and, and I think other jurisdiction are interested in it. But I mean, Ms. Tiffany's and her team are laying out the pathway. So there's a way, I, I think if, what the goal is, is to, to, uh, adopt staff's recommendation.
Well, I guess maybe I'll hold off on amending that because I'll make a separate motion. And then Ms. Tiffany, perhaps you can just answer a few more questions to help get a majority on board with doing some feasibility study not in 10 years. Um, but so I'll, I'll just, I'll just withdraw my amendment and just let, um, Mr. Thompson go first. I'd like to make another motion after that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not amending my amended motion.
So your, your motion is to accept staff's recommendation?
The two, then we go to three, correct?
Well, in, in, in what was presented, okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Thompson, it's seconded by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. Council, let's look to you for votes, this is to accept the recommended actions. Councilmember, uh, McNair?
Agreed.
All right, all right, motion carries, uh, you voted for it? All right, all right, motion carries unanimous. It's not contrary to what you just voted on, is it? Okay.
Uh, that we authorize staff to conduct a feasibility study, uh, as it relates to capital expansion and an analysis, um, as it relates to the cost of additional shelters. And Ms. Tiffany, or is there a second to that, I guess I'll wait?
Well, uh, just for clarification for my, my point.
Sure.
What you're asking, is it different from what was presented today?
No.
It's not different?
Go to slide, go to the next, or go to that one slide, that's it, expansion, step three. There we go, there, there it is.
So by the motion that just you voted on and along with every other council member, included all of this presentation today?
So what I'm talking about is a timeline, uh, different from what was just done, or more specific, I should say. How about that, a more specific timeline? And again, if you're not with it, you're not with it, but I want to ask Director Neal.
I just want to make sure I understand it so recently.
So what, what I'm saying is that a survey that was recommended, I think we can give them the green light to do that. Because right now, there, there is no feasibility study that has been authorized in order to accomplish step three.
Well, well, Ms. Tiffany, we just approved what you presented. Wha- what is included in there that speaks to?
We would do the feasibility study before we enter into step three. And the TDP is just saying we would expect if everything were to move as planned, to implement step three in 2030, the 2031. But we could start working on the feasibility study any day.
You can start working on the feasibility study when?
Any day.
Can that day be, but can we talk about that day part?
Yes, sir.
That, because that's my motion to be about.
Because we still got two more items.
Well, that's, but what, I mean, no, do we?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm saying it sounds like you need a greater detail, I think y'all are saying the same thing.
I think so too, but I guess I, I, I don't, I want to know when we're going to get that information back because it matters. Because I, 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 it is difficult for me to go and tell the community that we are making these changes, but I think what they really want is step three, when should they expect that? Well, nothing until we get a study done on expansion. When does that come?
So whenever the study would be complete, we would expect at least a six-month study to do that. But obviously, we would have to go through our procurement process and, and do all of that. But as soon as it's completed, just like we just finished this one, and we're bringing it before you. So we would come back immediately with the findings of that study.
So you're not going to wait five years to conduct that study?
No, sir, we can do that now, as soon as we get clearance from our procurement team that we can go ahead and get that done.
I trust Ms. Tiffany?
Okay, well, again, just, I got, I got, I gotta make sure, so that's happening and we can potentially get that back in the next six months?
As soon, as soon as this is done, the, the study itself, once it gets started, will probably take at least six months to conduct. So as soon as we can get a, a contract underway and everything like that, we would then do the study and come immediately back to council.
Well, I guess the reason I'm asking too is because we've got a budget this summer. And I don't want to shortchange y'all on what could be.
So I see where you're going, so each department will submit their recommended budgets to the manager. And then, so I don't think that's going to be impacted by that. Is that, is that what you're, you're concerned, to make sure they've got the money to pay for it?
I'm saying right now, they're working with about $14 million is my understanding, five of it from fares, the rest from general fund. I think they need to be working with closer to 20 to 25 million dollars. And I want to justify that number with some data.
But, but isn't that why they come with their budget? You know, because we don't, we're not that far in this space, but I mean, I like pulling numbers out the air, but I'm saying they're going to go through a budget process that will come to us for us to do.
Well, to avoid.
Which is why I wanted to have this conversation at budget time.
Yeah, well, I want to avoid pulling numbers out the air by asking for the requisite data.
All right, well, I think on this particular item, what was presented today, I think we, we've decided on it. Maybe y'all can have a little bit more detail. And I look forward to some budget meetings to kind of get to that. Because once we crack that budget door open, that, that just goes in a whole different direction. But can you speak to him about whatever his concerns are about that, as y'all put the budget together, okay? All right, because council, we're trying to, we've got a couple more folks that are here, uh, that's been, been patient. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, all right, council, we're three and a half hours in, uh, yeah, item 6.05, urban plan, that I thought we had already adopted. Last meeting, what's going on, Mr. Alex, you back?
You did an amendment, yes, sir.
This is the adoption of the new.
That's correct. Look, oh, no. I promise you won't be that long. Yeah.
There you go. He just forgot the "tuh."
Good afternoon, good evening, at this point, mayor, mayor pro tem and city council members. I've been asked to speak to you tonight about, um, our consolidated annual action plan, some low-income tax credit, and a updated citizen participation plan. So HUD's Community Development Office has a few objectives for their entitlement fundings, and those are on your screen. Uh, to develop viable communities, programs should have community improvements, investing in infrastructure and public spaces, affordable housing, uh, the, support the construction as well as the maintenance of affordable housing along with economic development opportunities. The city receives these four HUD entitlement programs along with the eligible activities listed there. They are the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Fund, Emergency Solutions Grant, and then finally, the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. A- as part of the presentation, we have conducted a, a market analysis and a needs assessment. Um, and they are displayed here, the priority needs and the goals. Uh, you'll see eight priority needs, uh, ranging from affordable housing to effective program management. You'll see nine goals, uh, the third one, which is neighborhood revitalization, revitalization has two parts. And so the three and four on the goals actually go with neighborhood revitalization to improve public facilities and infrastructure along with the blight removal. So how did we get there to those needs and, and, um, goals? Uh, we took a consolidated plan process that has, that governs five years of our programming. Uh, we did that, again, the needs assessment and market analysis. Did that strategically to come up with a, uh, annual action plan and the consolidated plan that we took out for citizens, uh, to review and give them opportunity to participate and share their thoughts. Uh, on how citizens was able to participate, uh, we had four community meetings. We did a community survey as well as surveys with our nonprofit stakeholders and people like the Public Housing Authority. We did a 30-day public comment period, uh, where it was posted throughout the city as well as online and, uh, or at our office. Uh, we also held a meeting with our Redevelopment Commission, which is our, um, Citizen Advisory Board. And we're here tonight, or this afternoon, rather.
It'll be tonight in a minute.
With you. Um, so that's the kind of process. Um, the, the five-year plan, uh, has five major components. It, it can, it requires a needs assessment, again, a housing market analysis. Again, that rolls up into a five-year strategic plan, uh, that encapsulates each annual action plan. So every year for the next four years following this year, uh, will coincide with that five-year plan. Moving right along, in meeting with our residents, um, we did come up and talk to them about what they seen as their community needs. And on this slide, you see the number one need was affordable housing, followed by supportive services and home repairs. In talking about particularly drilling down to their housing needs to understand that more, uh, the number one current concern was the cost of repairs, lack of affordable units, and then the rental cost. So that talked about our consolidated plan, I want to talk to you a little bit about our annual action plan, which again fits in that five-year plan. So here on this chart, you'll see our funding allocations. Uh, the first line is the direct new funding. You'll see in those, those lines there, uh, we had to adopt this year, this current year's funding allocations. As HUD has not produced those yet, we'll talk some more about the impact of that. So you'll see fresh funding at the top, then you'll see program income. The two programs that have income are CDBG, 45,000 is what we anticipate, and then 173 in home funds. Uh, we do make loans, whether that's loans to private developers to build affordable housing units, single-family or apartments, or whether that's a small business loan to a business owner. As those get paid back with minimum interest, uh, that becomes program income. So we track that and invest that back. Uh, the home funds do, does require a match, that's there. So you'll see our total resources projected down at the bottom, uh, 2.4 for CDBG, 1.2 for home. Um, almost 900,000 for HOPA, 155,000 for ESG, for a total of 4.7. We want to drill down a little bit further and let you be aware of some caps and some limits. Um, so the one that I really want to call your attention to is the 15% for public services under CDBG. Um, that is our nonprofit funds that we award to nonprofits to partner to carry out duties that we could do, but they do so much better. Uh, so that is capped by the federal government at 15%, uh, which translates to about $263,000. Uh, you'll see a little later on, when we get ready to talk about those public services, we have fully maximized that amount. Um, the second number I want to call your attention to is that 15% for community housing, uh, development org- organizations. You'll hear it commonly referred to as a CHODO, that is our Habitat for Humanity Local. You'll hear it commonly referred to as a CHODO, that is our Habitat for Humanity locally. It is not capped, but there is a requirement that we set 15% aside. We have set more than 15%. When we get to that section of the budget, you'll see that we have allocated 150,000 for our local CHODO. So.
Can I ask you a question, Alex? Is that enough for CHODO?
So we're going to dig a little more in that, but with some combined resources, we do believe we have adequately funded them this year. But in and of itself, to answer your question, no, 150 alone would not be enough.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so here we are with the, with the process. We have, in November and January, we start by producing and having stakeholder engagements and having a notice of funding availability. We draft and prepare a plan. We have public comments for 30 days. We meet with the Fable Redevelopment Commission in March, and then we're here with you in April. Hopefully after tonight, we get some consensus, we'll be back at the end of the month, and we can present this in May to HUD and award contracts in July. So I talked a little bit about that $263,000 that we earmark for nonprofits, and here is a list of those that applied that we would like to move forward with some consensus and adoption of the budget. We would be looking to engage these nonprofits. So you'll see there, there are some funding amounts, the amount that they requested and the amount of recommendation, you'll see that we had total requests totaling over about $460,000. Again, our max was 263,000, so we made some tough choices based on their application, how they relate to the city council's goals and priorities and strategic plan, and how they relate to the strategic plan and goals of the department and federal funds. So we bring that to you today for review. You'll notice down at the bottom, there are some that we did not fund, and that's for various reasons, because there is a metric that their program goes through in regard to, again, city council funding priorities as well as federal grants, and they did not score as well in relation to the other. Or in some cases, you can see, they came to the city for full funding of their program. So for various reasons, those are who we received, and those are our word recommendations for your consideration. We did have some with ESG, which is our emergency solutions or homeless funding. We had, again, 140-some thousand dollars when we backed out the admin cap. And so here are the three that we are recommending for council to fund for their programs, street outreach, rapid rehousing, and homeless services. The three, four that you see there not funded, they lacked experience or they did not have a good application when scored through the matrix. So this is the part here where we talk about not subject to the grants. You'll see here that there are a couple of rehab allocations. Again, two of it is new funding, $150,000 for Habitat for Humanity and Fable Urban Ministry. And that's because they have such large rollover. As you see, they both still have $300,000 from the prior year funds, and so added 150 to that gets them to about the half of a million-dollar allocation that we have been allocating them annually. So as they still have a lot of bit of money left over, we again are only asking them to fund $150,000. In the housing trust fund with new funding, we would look at placing $882,000 to continue single-family housing development as well as apartments with our li-take deals. And then finally, at the bottom, you'll see again that new appropriation of $150,000 for a total allocation of 1.8 million dollars towards rehab and new construction. So. I loaded a new one up. Okay, so on our plan submission to HUD, HUD has not issued the final numbers, our final allocation. The plan that you have before you is again on the current allocation that we are using for this year. The city may not have the final numbers by the April 28 hearing that we're asking if we get consensus tonight. And to be honest with you, the final numbers may not even be available by the May 15 goal. If that should occur because of the transition, then what we'll do is we'll work with you to adopt the budget in July when you adopt the regular budget. And we will ask that that be done on the current level. That's because we do have to submit a plan by August 16, 45 days before the new budget year begins for the federal government October 1. And so if that should occur, then we will come back to you once we receive those final numbers and update you on the increase or decrease at that time.
By April, what happens?
So we have to submit our funding request 45 days prior to our budget year start. Our start's July 1. 45 days prior to that is August the 15th. So we ideally should submit our plan 45 days before our new budget year. If HUD doesn't reject or have any comments, then it plans and we're prepared for our July 1 budget. All right, so if, if we don't get the budget numbers and the final allocation because of the things that are going on on a national level, then what we will do is we will fold these numbers that we presented into the budget, to you and your budget, your budget workshops that you've talked a lot about tonight.
Before July.
And you will, we will ask you to adopt them at that time. If it goes up or it goes down, then we will come back at a later date and apprise you of that.
I just want to make a note of that, that we would have to look this up by June if it's not financially done by April.
Because we have to submit by the August 16.
Got you. Thank you, sir. All right, we have a couple questions on there, Mr. Alex. So, okay, Councilman Thompson already went, Mayor Pro Tem, and then I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Davis and Benefite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we could go back to the slide that it showed the annual action plan awards, competitive awards?
Yes, ma'am.
So I just, just for my FYI knowledge, this Pearl Transit Corporation, what do they do?
So they are, they do dentures and parcels. And so they are someone, they have partnered with a local nonprofit agency to do the extraction, and then they go out and do street outreach, bring people into the day resource center, and they have the equipment in the day resource center to do your denture or your partial.
Okay, not what I was thinking. So what? So I guess what I'm hearing is they are out, they are out and about, they see someone that might have an abs, you know, somebody that needs care for their teeth, they take them to the place to get it done? Am I hearing that correctly?
So they make a referral. They make a referral to Better Health. Better Health will handle the extraction, and then they come back and they get them and make their partial or their denture.
So there's no transit in this whatsoever?
Not in our community.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, I did have a question for Jeff. I see that about almost 900,000 is coming out of the housing trust, which is what we had the citizens to approve to Gapfield. How much do we collect annually?
So this would be new appropriation. I'd have to get back with you, mayor, on that, the answer for that question.
Okay, I appreciate that. I guess I'm asking, out of the overall budget, how much do we collect for this housing trust? Because that was the bond that was recently passed as the source of these funds, right?
So we are expecting, go ahead.
The, we have not issued the $12 million for the new GO debt yet, so.
So this was the 4 million that we had in there from COVID, from?
I think Chris has better answer that.
From the ARPA dollars? We had, we had put a little seed money in there from ARPA, right?
So a lot of the things we do are blended funding sources. So when we talk about a housing trust fund, it is more of a concept than an account because it's got a bunch of different accounting things that we have to track separately. So this is us putting home funds into that pot of money to create new affordable housing. So we've got, right now, we've got some state money in there, we've got a little bit of local dollars for some down payment programs, we've got home money, we've got American Rescue Plan money, we've got home, yeah.
So when you dump it in there, how, how do you, how do you, because each one of those sources of funds has certain guidelines?
Yes, sir.
So how do you keep all of that straight if it goes into one bucket?
So when we talk to a developer, we say we've got a housing trust fund with this much money in it. When we get down to actually underwriting their deal, we say, okay, well, using this kind of money, your rents have got to be at this level. You've got to do X, Y, and Z based on that funding source. So it's all separately accounted for.
Right, I get that, okay, so that's from an accounting perspective, but let's say, let's say I've got a pot and I put 200,000 from HUD, which has HUD rules, 200,000 from local money, which has local rules, lot less, 200,000 from a state grant, which has its own set of rules.
Right.
And I mix all that in one pot to make my million. When someone is coming in asking for or presenting something to you, do you automatically give them the HUD rules, the state rules, or the local rules? Or how do you differentiate that since you all have it in there? Because if you say, hey, I've got 20, 10 million dollars in a housing trust, but it's all mixed up with rules, isn't it all convoluted when they know exactly how much they have for something that is specific, that may fit local rules but not federal rules, or something that may fit state rules that not?
So we start talking big picture. If a developer calls us up and wants to talk about building affordable housing, we talk big picture about where their project is, what they're proposing, what their financials looks like, and the rents and things like that. And then my team, particularly Jeff back there more, goes in and goes, okay, if you're looking at charging these rents, then we can match that up with this funding source. If you're looking at these, then we can match it up with this one. So we're looking for the best fit. Once we put a federal dollar in it, that doesn't mean that everything that has to do with the money from the city is federal. Sometimes.
So you're able to capital stack it?
Right, absolutely, yeah, capital stack, exactly, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe that this requires a motion or anything, but I was going to accept the report. But however, I do have a question in reference to the competitive awards. For the ones that are not funded, what, you said that there's some, the application basically wasn't correct, correct?
So we have some capacity building, and so, you know, we do offer three classes. They're welcome to attend those classes, to learn how to affect, have an effective nonprofit, business grants and those kind of things. And so we try to work with them, let them know what, how to have a better application and do capacity building. So and they're welcome to attend those classes as well, free of charge.
And one more question in reference to this. So I see that some people asked for like 55,000, and you gave 10, versus another one who asked for 65, and they got 50,000. What is the measurements of how much they get?
It depends on their goals and how those goals align very well with city goals or city council goals. Also, the length of our relationship with them. If they're a first-time partner, that is a high-risk endeavor because they may have never handled CDBG or federal funds before, and typically we cap those at $10,000. A first-time agency, like you see here, you'll get them ask you for 144 to run in the whole program. They just come to the city and want the city to fund. But first-year programs, we typically recommend them at $10,000 to mitigate risk.
So the Pearl Transit isn't a first-time?
No.
Okay.
That's correct.
I believe that was all of my questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Benefite.
Am I correct in noticing that there are some annual action plan competitive awards granted to folks that also got the, what is the other, smaller?
Micro grants.
Micro grants.
Yes, sir. And so some of our micro grants recipients have incorporated nonprofits and have applied now for CDBG federal funding and have outgrown the local funding because they're ready for that next step.
Well, okay, so that would make sense to me. I'm asking, are there some that have gotten the mini grant and this?
Yes.
This year?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. And then I appreciate what you said about the folks that are not funded being offered classes and just opportunities to improve, because I always find like the hardest thing to find in the city is people willing to do stuff, and maybe not all of them are, you know, just there yet to handle this kind of opportunity. But we can, we can refine and sort of shape and form a diamond in a rough, but to find it in the first place is the hardest thing. So if they've applied, I mean, it sounds like you guys are already doing a good job of kind of trying to say, but don't go anywhere, you know, here, here's, here's some other things that you can do. And I guess that's definitely encouraging. I guess the last thing I'll ask is, there's stuff on here that I would love to be able to respond when people are asking questions like, why doesn't Fable do X, Y, or Z? Or, you know, what is Fable doing on this front or that front? I bet you my ability to answer some of those questions or concerns is here on that list of folks, and I'm just curious about a better way for us to understand what J6 Youth Foundation is doing and what, you know, I could pick out a number, some of them are obvious, we know what, you know, some of them do.
Pearl Transit.
Pearl Transit.
Oh, that's what you guys were asking about, sure, sure. But I think in a positive way, I think we would be able to like point to people and say, like, hey, I just heard about this great organization that does this great thing. So I would love to find a way for us to be better educated, and I felt that way too when I saw the micro grants as well, where I said, that sounds interesting, I wonder what they're actually doing, not, not, not to question them, but to really direct folks to them and to be able to hopefully, you know, help them grow. So I don't know if today is the time to ask for that? Okay, fine, all right.
We do produce a quarterly report, which lists a lot of our partnerships, what they're doing, how much they're funded at. So once, if approved.
Yes, sir.
And we begin, next year you would see quarterly reports with updates on who they are, what they're funding, and what that looks like, that funding level.
Okay, that's what we'll have to ask for. You guys are going to be very free and active on giving that to us.
Yes.
The latter.
We produce it every quarter. Make sure that you get it.
Do we have old ones then?
We do.
Yeah, give them to us.
Certainly. They're posted on the website, but we'll work with our city manager to make sure that you have that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, I do have two more slides that I need to get through, and I will be back. I promise.
All right, Councilman Mahdros, wait and pace him.
All right, so the last thing I have is low-income tax credit applications. We want to make you aware, there are three that we would like conditional, to issue conditional letters to. They are at the state level, and the state will make that award, and so we would like to give all three a conditional use letter. Here are those sites, the project cost, and then what the request would be. We really only anticipate making one award, is that's typically what the city of Fable is awarded a year. The Rosso Commons is in District 2. The property in Hidden Grove on Skybrow Road is District 7, and then Aspen Point on Rayford Road is District 8, and there is the maps. I pause now for any questions.
Yes, sir. Let me go to Councilman Mahdros because I need to make a statement first.
My, thank you, Mr. Mayor, was on the previous slide on the grant with the nonprofit funding from the, what is it, CBDG and ESG? So for repeat nonprofits that are partners that are recurring, they apply like every year, how does that work? Like, do we, does the city just open the application so any nonprofit can, can apply and just through our social media and website have that info? Or if, let's say I was a nonprofit and we put an application for funding last year and were awarded, say, $10,000, are we reminded like, hey, it's time again, put a new application? Or do they just have to watch for the ads?
Couple of different ways. They should always monitor social media, the city's monitoring, they should bookmark our page and stay familiar, as we do update our what's happening page fairly often. But we also put those individuals in a listserv, and so anytime that we put out money, because we put out money at this same time every year for this activity, but we put out money throughout the year, we push that availability, that notice out through the listserv.
Is it like emails? Okay, thank you. And then the second question, so we just got done speaking about transit. For smaller, instead of like the big buses that transit usually has, smaller like vans or something where it's more kind of like an Uber for folks that maybe don't, don't have the resources for that, is it possible to have any of these funds, grant funds or whatever, that could be utilized by our transit department for an additional service?
We do look for ways that we could partner with other departments within the city, and we'll have to look at that one and bring any rec. and we'll have to look at that one and bring any recommendations back.
The county, they have some funding they get from, uh, I think it's FTA, it might be FHWA, but, and they provide, they call it community,
Question.
transportation, something, something, I forget the acronym. But, um, so I was just curious if there was any funding that would qualify that if we're not using it for any other project, that we can use it with, uh, transit to enhance that? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember McNair has a question. But is that LI, that, uh, low-income housing tax credit slide in here? Because it's not online.
I apologize. We had to update it. You'll have it accessed.
Okay, all right, Councilmember McNair.
Yes, hello, Alex, how are you?
Fine, thank you, Councilor.
As always, um, I have a question about the determining factor of, it says only, uh, you said only one or two development, developments will be funded? Is, uh, is this saying that only two on this list will be funded?
So that decision is made with the state with their awarding of tax credits? And so, uh, you know, typically Fayetteville only gets one. You may get two, but I couldn't tell you for sure whether you get one or two, madam, because that is made at the state level.
So you don't know how the determination is made, so to speak?
It's, it's a scored system.
Yes, it's a scored system.
North Carolina Housing Finance scores it, and, but it's real competitive based on some things. Councilwoman McNair.
Oh, okay, I guess I get them things later.
Oh, oh, no, well, I mean, it's a list of them, like how close you to transit, grocery stores. I mean, they've, they've got a score.
A pharmacy, yes, ma'am. We can get you that information of how, how they're scored and ranked.
I, I would appreciate that, Alex. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, madam.
So Alex, uh, um, Councilor, I was at, uh, on Monday, I went to Dallas for a housing conference. And, uh, it was very, very informative. Doug and I went last year. I went back this year. And, uh, it was all about housing. And, uh, it talked about, it was one class called Rowin' in the Same Direction. And basically, uh, Chattanooga and Nashville were the presenters. And basically, they talked about what they did. So these low-income tax credits, you know, for those that know it, basically what happens is they'll get an award. Uh, they'll use these tax credits and sell them to banks or, or people to pay down their taxes, and that's the money that they put into the deal. It gives a thirty percent bonus to do these in distressed communities. So really, you're taking poverty and putting it back in the middle of poverty to get a bonus. The developer gets a benefit because now he takes a million-dollar, uh, value document and gets a million-three. But what it said cities can do, particularly Nashville and them, is they created TIFs around those, those deals like this. So in other words, like Murkison Road, for instance, you have a new development of Grove Street. They tear down old Grove View, build new Grove View, but it didn't change what's around it, right? The developer got his out of it and, and ran, uh, so to speak. I mean, it's a, it's a good service. But what they say is when you create a TIF, the city then uses the same model we did across the street to incentivize the other stuff that goes along with it. Grocery stores, uh, um, retail, because retail's not going to come into an impoverished area. So basically, you take, if one of these were awarded and you created a TIF around it, now you can have mixed income and market rate stuff coming in, you have retail coming in. So when we strategically, wherever these are awarded at, I think as a council, we need to look back and see where a TIF works. It could fix, uh, Murkison Town Homes on Murkison Road that if Housing Authority had a developer that rebuilt Rosemary or Murkison Town Homes, how do you change the McDonald's and the landscape around it? You could do it with a TIF to where you're able to get those, those future tax dollars and then incentivize market rate stuff to go over there. So, um, I think as we adopt this stuff, we need to, we need to apply all, any and all, um, of what we can do to, to in line with that. Because this will be a Housing Authority, private developer-driven process with community development. But I talked to Kelly about it once I heard it, and, uh, she thought it was pretty creative. And I said something to, to Doug, but, uh, we need to, we need to be thinking like that, how we leveraging, uh, some of these things. Um, and so I just wanted to bring that out. And, and, and Alex, if you can, if y'all hear about when these awards come in, maybe council can reconsider. And council, even, I would think some of the ones that we already had done, you know, um, we've won awards for Hope Six and for, uh, Grove View Terrace with, with the Rad. It was one of the first awards in the, in the country. But the other stuff didn't work around it, even though the, the Center City Business Park or part of Hope Six was intended to, it never happened. So maybe we can go in and create TIFs around the stuff that's already in place, you know? So, uh, just, just food for thought. Yeah, I guess second, you know, I can, if they, if they need to research what I'm talking about or we can find the presenters or the slides, I may reach out to Chattanooga or Nashville and see if they can provide the information. But it, it's worked well for them to the point of where they have reduced their number of distressed census tracts by doing it, you know, which is a, they don't get as many tax credits because they're not, not as impoverished. But as we're trying to pull out of this tier one, I think we've got to do stuff like that, so.
Great idea.
Yeah. All right, um, Councilman Thompson, is that a motion? Okay, oh, okay, you're like, it was old, okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion by Councilman Thompson, second by Benevente, discussion. All right, council, look to you for your votes. Now, uh, Alex, this is a conceptual, this will come back to a council meeting to approve this five-year plan if we need to make tweaks or adjustments. Uh, when is, when is this plan coming back to us?
The twenty-eighth, we'll ask you for it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That is green, Mr. Mayor, for me.
Okay, thank you, madam.
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, council, as we go to the next item, um, I have a, uh, a council member request, six oh seven. You know, ironically, six oh six got on here before six oh seven, um, which is good. But there are some things that I want to, uh, to bring to your attention. So I'm hoping that we don't fully make a decision to adopt it before I have a chance to get my five minutes for the other stuff. So I don't know how it happened to come the item before it, but it did. So I had put in the request about a week ago to expand it.
Councilmember request come after the regular item.
I, I know, but I mean, the particular subject that we talk about, uh, is, I just, you know, we can get the presentation. I just hope we don't make the action before you get a chance to. Okay, some of it, I read through it. I didn't see it, but. All right. Listen. Sorry about that.
No problem, Mayor. Um, good evening, council. Um, I promise my slide deck's a lot shorter than most. Uh, but I'm here to talk about, uh, proposed revisions to the Home Buying Hero program. Currently, our program, uh, we're broken down into three tiers. The citizen hero, the public service hero, and the city employee hero. The public service hero was, um, in addition from last year. We had made revisions to this plan and just started that program last year to, um, expand from just the citizens and city employees to include, as it stated, public service heroes, which includes the Kefir Medical System, Cumberland County Schools, and the Cumberland County Government Employees. Um, as we've worked through this, we've identified, um, some areas that we could revise or improve on. So that's what we're bringing to you tonight. Um, but currently, what we've accomplished with this program is over the last three years of doing a first-time homebuyer program, the citizen hero or our lowest tier has helped eight individuals become first-time homebuyers. Uh, within the one year or coming up on one year of the public service, we've assisted three individuals with becoming homebuyers. And the city employee hero, um, has included, uh, six people becoming, um, first-time homebuyers within the first year. Um, you can see some of those restrictions that we have on them. The, all of these are income restricted based off the family size and the, we calculate that by area median income. So who are we helping? Um, right now, threw together a couple photos of some of the individuals that we've helped. Uh, schoolteachers, police officers, um, just general citizens and kind of some of the homes that we've seen throughout the area. Uh, we have a cap, uh, set through our policy for new construction around the two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-dollar mark. Or, excuse me, new construction is two-eighty-eight, and existing properties are two-thirty-eight. Uh, these are examples of existings. We have had new construction, um, purchases within the, the city limits. So you've heard some of our, um, funding is blended. Uh, Chris mentioned to that a minute ago. We have federal funding, we have state funding, and we have local funding. Um, federal funding comes with the strictest of our requirements, which only allows us to go up to eighty percent of the area median income. Uh, the state funding, we found ways to work that up to a hundred-and-twenty percent of the area median income. And our city employees benefit the most with us being able to go up to a hundred-and-forty percent of the area median income. You can see the chart down here kind of gives you a breakdown, um, of what those, those levels are. And, uh, the very bottom line there shows the actual area median income for the city. So a, a family of four here at one hundred percent, um, would be making about seventy-five thousand dollars here. But you can see that same family of four, if they were a city employee, we'd be able to qualify them up to a hundred-and-five thousand dollars for, uh, first-time homeownership. So again, that eighty percent, um, I mentioned is, is a, the HUD category. So it's dedicated for low to moderate income individuals. That hundred-and-twenty percent is what we typically refer to as our workforce, uh, development or workforce, uh, housing. And then the one-forty, again, being, uh, really a, a city employee benefit is we're able to go to that one-forty and just for city employees. So as mentioned earlier, we were talking about buckets of funding and how they're mixed. Uh, that federal funding, that's part of that annual action plan that Alex had mentioned. That's our reoccurring budget that shows up. That if we get that home funding, we dedicate two-hundred thousand dollars of that for that first-time homebuyer, um, program. So far, we've spent thirty thousand of it, where we've got that one-seventy of unspent that we're remaining. That state funding that we mentioned was a one-time grant of a million dollars. So far, um, that's our kind of largest pot that we've been able to spend. That's, uh, three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand spent out of that, with six-seventy-five being unspent. Um, some of that went to those individuals that I had mentioned earlier, up to that one-twenty percent AMI. Also out of this pot is, um, we were using this to conduct our homebuyer workshop. Uh, that's a, um, a requirement that we put into our policy that every first-time homebuyer is, um, a graduate of an eight-hour homebuyer workshop that's conducted by HUD-certified counselors, so that everybody knows what they're, you know, about to embark on as they become a first-time homebuyer. So some of that funding as well, um, was spent on that. And then the local funding, um, was general fund dollars that was dedicated a, a while ago for a program that was formerly known as the, uh, Good Neighbor Program. Um, we've since moved into and expanded that, um, based off of information we've brought to council and your guidance, and we've been able to, again, benefit, um, those individuals. We spent about two-hundred thousand out of there, which is leaving about two-hundred-and-fifty left. Um, so how did we get here? Again, like I just mentioned, in two thousand and nineteen, uh, council approved the Good, the Good Neighbor Program. That was originally just a select location of areas within the city, and it was first dedicated just to our police officers. Um, it's slowly been expanded over time. But then in two thousand and twenty-two, we were able to expand our federal grant program. Um, again, that first bucket that we were talking about. And then in twenty-three, we, um, expanded all of those together to, uh, add the federal grants to higher incomes, along with those state dollars that we mentioned. And then just recently in twenty-four, um, we've combined all of them and rebranded everything into the Home Buying Hero program. So really, what we're getting at here is those three separate buckets. Through all of these small iterations and improvements, we found some shortcomings and some differences. And what we'd like to do is try to marry those and, and make them more, um, even across the board with still falling into, um, those improved tiers. So we're not looking to make any changes to the citizen hero. Um, the public service hero, when we first implemented that, you see, they were a hundred-and-twenty percent AMI. They were allowed to go up to, um, thirty, thirty thousand dollars of, um, homebuyer assistance. That was forgivable over five to ten years. Um, what we noticed was we didn't put any, uh, probationary requirement that we were adding to our city employees. And we didn't have a performance requirement that we were employing, um, employing onto our city employees as well. And something that through all of our outreach that was brought up was, um, we're not including our retirees of those agencies. So, um, if a city employee worked here today, they'd be eligible for up to thirty thousand dollars. They retire tomorrow, then we're reducing their amount that they could be getting because they would qualify as a citizen hero and not that city employee hero. So what we're looking to do is kind of marry those and, and blend it a little better, um, across the board. The other one that we noticed was that city employees, we were guaranteeing them thirty thousand dollars, whether they needed the full thirty thousand or not. Um, and what that would ultimately do over the long run is slowly deplete that pot a little quicker. So what we're proposing is that the public service heroes, that they be, that we implement a, uh, one-year employment and a performance criteria so that it more matches and aligns with our city employees. That the, um, city employee guaranteed thirty thousand dollars be reworked to be an up to thirty thousand dollars. And you can see there that it would still remain at the hundred-and-forty AMI and still get the five-year, um, affordability benefit. But if they didn't need that full thirty, we would be able to reduce it down to what was required to, um, allow us to have a little more money to spend a little longer. And then, uh, the last one here, public service heroes, does not include retirees. So council could allow public service and city retirees to be considered. Public service heroes, they would, they're currently restricted to the twenty thousand that I had just mentioned, um, after they're retired. They would be eligible for thirty thousand if they were still employed. Um, they would remain at the one-twenty. So if a city retiree, um, we allow them to be a public service, they would be that reduced area median income, um, but they would still be able to get up to thirty thousand. So again, and my last slide here is staff recommendation would be to add a one-year requirement for public service heroes, add a performance requirement for public service heroes, uh, remove the guaranteed thirty thousand for city employees. Um, again, it would still be up to thirty thousand as needed and allow the public service and city retirees to be considered public service heroes and, and allow them the increase of up to that thirty thousand. Um, with your approval tonight, staff would make all these updates in our policies, um, put that out on social media and on the city website, um, as appropriate. Barring.
Yeah, I, I did, um, a few of those things were, were relevant to, to what my, uh, ask for consideration with council was going to be. I see Councilmember Mahendros, but I'll, I'll go ahead and, and, well, let me get, get you to go. All right, so prior to that, council, uh, I think this is great. Um, I'm, I'm passionate about this because, uh, we initially, as we talk about, how do we, you know, our, our rent-to-own balance is off. And, and leaving that conference the other day, it talked about communities, um, some of the better communities in terms of how much they're paying for rent and mortgage. Austin and some of the other ones at nineteen percent versus what the income is. And places like New, New Jersey at forty-seven percent. And, and we are, have a, a higher rent and very tight rental market. And so some of the things I was going to ask about, um, as we, as we have expanded this to the hospital and to cover government employees, because if you could look at this, at the bucket, uh, list, if you can go back to the bucket lister. It's good, but I would like to see the buckets empty, right? Because we want to see the program successful to where it, it works. And so I think there were just a few tweaks. I'm, I'm proud about what we've done to expand it to the schools and to the hospitals, um, because all of this is to get people to live in our community. I sent you something earlier today, which showed, uh, how many people commute into Fayetteville a day, right? And where they come from. And so I also sent you something, which is twelve thousand and three people roughly from these counties that were listed here. I also sent you something today that showed what our population growth was compared to others. So we, we grew at one percent. Um, uh, Hoke and, Hoke and, Hoke did it fifteen percent, Hunter did eighteen percent. And then our municipal peers, uh, Forsife, which is Winston, it was eight-point-four, Guilford, nine-point-five, Mecklenburg, sixteen, and Raleigh, sixteen, and New Hanover, sixteen. So those are, well, Wake was actually twenty. So we're at one, but we've got twelve thousand people that drive in here every day that already work here, right? And the reason they don't live here could be because we have a very tight rental market, and we want to encourage more of them to be homeowners. So one thing was I, I had asked that we include, as, as you're talking about a government employee, uh, our universities, you know, FTCC, Fayetteville State have people who work in maintenance. They have people who work in grounds. They have people who work in the, in the, in the dining hall. They have people who do things at these schools that fit into this category. That's a governmental institution to expand it, to include those places. Methodist as well, it just makes sense to, to do it. You know, Department of Corrections as well. These people are already driving here. We've got to get our, our population growth up to get out of this tier one. We've got twelve thousand people that already come here. What the conference said was that What the conference said was that your likelihood to keep people retained and in your community is based on their availability to find a house. Rental market's tight, the rent is high compared to. So a lot of people just deciding to drive from these, all these counties to come here to work every day. So I think we've got a sweet spot right here that if we expand it, where are they coming to work at could very easily help them start to participate. The other thing is we're recruiting police officers every day from Puerto Rico, from New York, from Virginia. We get them to come here, right? We want them to buy into the community, but so it's still up to them to find somewhere to rent to wait to wait this one year probation. And if it's waived for police officers, it should be waived for the other city employees, in my opinion, because that means that I've got to stay here a year. If I don't have a good rental situation, maybe I just need to look somewhere else. So I'm paying more and so the money's not worth it. So now I go live somewhere else and I never made my year. So if this is really to retract and attain, to me, that's a barrier, not an incentive. The other thing is that now we're talking about adding that barrier to the public service part that we just expanded it to. So now you're telling a school teacher, you've got to find somewhere to rent a year and then you'll be eligible to buy a home when it should be the opposite way around. We should be making the pathway easy to do it. And then the final thing I'll say is if you've owned a home in the last three years, you're ineligible, right? So two couples, one couple marry one another, one works for the hospital and one works for the city. Or a police officer comes from Virginia and he had a home in Virginia, him and his wife moved here, but he's ineligible to participate because he had a home that he owned three years ago, within the last three years. I think that is a barrier or a couple gets married and they had a home and he had a home, but now they buy a home, they're ineligible because they had their name on a deed. So I think a few tweaks will help those buckets empty out, help our population growth of these 12,000 people that are already coming in here. We've got to get this 1% to get out of this tier one. So I mean, I think that it's just a couple of things we can do that I wanted you to consider before we adopt this, because this is going to actually add impediments.
Counsel request.
Well, you counting over there, Mari? All right. So Councilmember Hondros had his light and then I see Benevente had his light, but Hondros had a motion.
Well, I was prepared to move to accept staff's recommendations, but I'm interested in how to incorporate your recommendations in it as well.
Some of them. Not all of them.
Okay.
So is there a separate council member request coming up for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I move to.
I'll have some questions for staff.
Okay, you want to ask them first?
Please.
All right. I'll defer and I'm ready to make a motion whenever questions are done.
Could you go back to your ultimate recommendations? I know you gave like some examples, but then ultimately you said this, right? Right now of the, was it 17 people total?
Yes, sir.
That were, how many of people would have been in, not prohibited, but impacted by that? Like was anyone, you know, would any of these adjustments have actually prevented anyone from being able to to come in? Like they all worked here for at least a year, right?
All of the city employees, yes, sir. All the city heroes had to work here a year. That's a current requirement. But yes, for the other, the citizen employees or the teachers, if we had that that restriction on them, I'd have to go back and research their time in the job.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand is would any of these recommendations have made it difficult or made it impossible for someone who's already applied to have gotten it? Like there are, there is some number.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, you don't know what that number is?
Not off the top of my head, sir.
Okay. That's fine. I don't know if you speculate. Can you go back to the city hero? Is that the citizen hero? Who qualifies to be a citizen hero? Any citizen in Fayetteville?
Anybody that's wanting to purchase a first time home buyer within the city limits of Fayetteville.
So I'm trying to understand Mayor Colvin, your point about expanding it to Methodist and to all these other things, they're all just citizens.
Well, I guess my point is that this was, there is a longer list of things under this public service piece. And so from my understanding, are you saying that that whether you work for any governmental institution or not, if you buy a home in the city of Fayetteville, that you qualify for the first block?
Yes, sir.
Right.
The distinguishing between the two.
And so so the purpose, the difference, I think, is the reason why we offer it as a benefit for city staff, we get people committed to our institution. And so if these are the largest employers in the area, it's not like we have a Ford or or a Toyota here that employ thousands of people. 60, 70% of our people work for one of those governmental institutions. And so it was it was basically something that they could offer so that I can guarantee you that the numbers here are higher for people that are commuting in here to come to a to a to one of those places. So it doesn't, one doesn't take away from the other, in my opinion, but.
Yeah, I guess I hear some of your things. I just have concerns about, you know, you said you want a commitment from the people. Well, that's the reason there's a one year commitment to work with us just to before we give you taxpayer money, right? Because we don't know if you're committed to this area for, you know, it's like, that's why you get 20 versus 30 is because you're getting a little bit more because you're giving a little bit more.
Actually, this way, is it easier for me to break a lease or to sell a house? You know, when you're a mortgage, you're kind of investing here versus not.
Yeah, but I think I think, you know, assuming everything like to your benefit of your argument, I don't think it's necessarily how we should govern, because I would even argue that of all the people traveling in from those many different counties that you suggested, there are reasons not to come here is because of the schools than more so than necessarily just the jobs.
Yeah, I don't know. Housing availability score is pretty high, but that's your opinion.
I know, but well, we can we can get specific, but I think if it was just about that, it would show up in some data from staff. And if we want to request some data for staff on that front, great, but it's like taking my assumption versus taking your assumption when we could just direct staff to maybe look into it. I get the idea that we want to make more of these dollars available and get more of this money out the door. I don't disagree with that, but I feel like you're kind of ready just to give it all away without thinking about some of the reasons for us having these requirements.
Got you. All right. Go to Councilman Mayor Protiel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when we were discussing this, this is how I put it in my head. We are looking for police officers, we are looking for firemen, we are looking for people in the medical field. And as I saw it and we looked at it is if somebody in the family owns a house, has owned a house in three years, they cannot take advantage of this amount of money. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So you have a single mom, she has, you know, some kids, she goes and becomes a nurse and she gets, she goes through the HOPE program, she's getting on her feet, she finds, you know, the love of her life and they live in Harney County and he decides that he wants to be a police officer, but he owns a home and it might be a small home. But if they get married, they can't take advantage of this. They, because he's owned a home, whether it's, and maybe she has kids, that that home isn't big enough, but she would have to travel up to Harney County. So when we say that, it's easy to look at it in paper, but if we are, it's almost to a point that we're saying you have to stay this way to be able to get a benefit when maybe they, you know, they are working for the city and the public safety and the betterment for our community. So I personally believe that we need to do this and we need to make it out there so people can stay here and want to live, work, and recreate here. And they might have children under five, they might need to be right down the road from their children. I made my whole business to be beside my children. So I think we need to look at the bigger picture of it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Thompson.
Oh, I'm coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of meetings we've had within the past two months has been about streamlining policies and procedures and standards to make things easier for our residents to want to live, work, and recreate here. I think this is just another avenue that we need to use so we can increase our population base and increase our economic development. And one thing that, and I agree with you, Mayor, but one thing that really stuck out to me when I was reading over this is performance measure. Who are we, if you already given them a one year probation, why do they also need a performance measure? I don't understand it.
It says no performance.
That's not what it says.
Public service doesn't have performance.
I'm talking about public service, yes, and city employees I'm talking about.
Right. Yes, sir. For the city employees, that was actually carried over from the original program when it was dedicated just for police officers. We've had a few people that due to either changes in positions within the city weren't able to, you know, specifically hit that meets expectations. But really the thing was in the probationary year that we wanted to make sure that somebody was going to meet the expectation of the city and not benefit for someone that was extending their probationary period.
So help me understand this and maybe Chief, you can help me out since this was a program that started with the police department. If they've already met, if they're up to or just about being up to their one year probation and they move and change departments, that means that they have to wait another year for them to get a performance measure before they can be eligible for this program?
No, so there's always or exceptions to every rule. We've had that in the past where an individual had worked in a department for only nine months and they had moved to another department for a promotion. What we did was we looked back at their previous performance measure and then reached out to their current supervisor and said, is there an issue that you believe will be moving forward in this probationary timeframe? So we took that under advisement completely, not to just go, if you don't have a meets expectation, you are not qualified.
That's what I wanted to hear. Awesome. And I look forward to my colleagues realizing that this is a process and others that need to be streamlined to help all of our citizens in the city of Fayetteville. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Green.
I find that oftentimes, as a realtor, I find that oftentimes we are so restrictive that for the very thing we're trying to accomplish and the people we are trying to help, we are actually hurting them. The mortgage industry does it, our community does it, time and time again. So my opinion, instead of requiring them to be here that year, take away the restriction and then then penalize them on the other end should they not meet that requirement. So if you are recruiting someone and you've got an officer who's moving here and you're using this as consideration to have them move here, then what better thing to say the city offers this loan program, you can buy a home and we'll help you with up to $30,000. And oh, by the way, you can do it immediately. And the only caveat is that if you do not stay in our employment for a year, you have to sign something upfront that says that money gets repaid back to the city of Fayetteville if you break those terms. So to me, there doesn't need to be a restriction on the front end, there needs to be consequences on the back end. It's just like a lot of the money that community development, block grants, you got a loan and then if you've met the terms of that loan, it disappeared after a certain amount of time. So we need to go back to that way of thinking in my mind because you can't have people that you want to give consideration to, but we're not, you want them to give us consideration, but we aren't given any consideration in return. So that's, that's where my thoughts are.
Yeah, and I was going to say, or if you sell the home, right? If you if you come in six months, you got our down payment, you sell the home, you've got to pay it back. I mean, and so there are ways to do it. All right. And Councilmember Hondros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just prepared to make a motion, but being cognizant of your next council request, would it be helpful if we table this till after your after your request and then come back to this?
It's kind of my thoughts. I mean, I.
I would make that motion if that helps.
Yeah.
Address it now.
Thanks, spokesperson.
Well, I'm just saying, is there anything?
I don't have much else to say. I'm just going to add one, one thing and then we can.
Just do it now. You've already had more than five minutes on.
And the only thing I was saying about it, you want this to work, right? And so there are ways, as you said, to make it easier for people to participate, which includes other public institutions, right? If the county and the city and some of these other places are all governmental employees, whether it's the state, the county, or the city, because the funds come from all three, why wouldn't you offer to a state owned university or to a state FT, a community college or you have, they have one of the most robust programs here. And so my thing is make it consistent, make it easy, but you know, put those, put those controls in there. Like you said, I don't think it should be one year probation and all of that other stuff, but if you sell your home or you get terminated for cause, then pay it back.
I mean, we're going to potentially have people that are coming here as part of the new healthcare system and the healthcare education piece. So why would we not want to encourage them? Because when they finish their education, where do we want them to go? We want them to stay here. If we give them the assistance they need to buy that home, a part of that piece we've cemented them to this community, we're not, we're not trying to, you know, say, hey, we're making this tough on you so you have to make a bad decision. We want to make it easier.
Well, and the other thing is, and I'll say this, at that conference, they said, check your exit interviews. See why people told, they said, a lot of times people accept jobs, i.e., we've been in that, I don't want to name any specific departments, but we've seen people accept and then they come and then they never come back. They said, check your exit interviews when people leave because a lot of times it's based on, you know, I couldn't find a decent place to move my family, so I'm not going to move my family, you know? And so I can go stay in a one bedroom, but my wife and kids are not here. And so I think you get more of the options available by doing that. And this is not me saying it, this is, this is what data has showed, people make decisions based on. Yes, schools are part of it, but also housing is a huge piece.
I hear it.
Yeah, all right. All right, so I don't have any, anything else on my end to add. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Davis, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Thank you, sir. Two questions. Does the county have a similar down payment assistance program? From my understanding, they do.
They do have a down payment assistance program.
And what are their restrictions?
It's their individual restrictions, I'm not sure. I'd have to research that for you, sir. I know that it's significantly less money. I believe their down payment assistance is $5,000.
Oh, no. Okay. It's not comparable. So with ours, I would like to see, even if after this, to see what some of our restrictions are that we have so that we can maybe, well, I would like to look at them so I can see if council will be willing to go through them and maybe lessen some more restrictions to see if we can get more money out. So I guess that's the direction for Mayor, I mean, City Manager and team.
Yeah. All right. So I'll go to Councilmember Benevente and then Hondros has his.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Green's comment about another way to have a check and a balance, you know, if they leave early. And I appreciate Councilmember Davis's comment about wanting to take a finer tooth comb over this, because can you go back to your recommendations again? Tell me your name again, sir.
Jeff Morton, sir.
Mr. Morton, I don't know if it's Mr. Morton or if it's City Manager Hewitt that could answer this, but you guys can give us, you know, whereas we got the negative perception of these things, there's a reason why they were implemented at one point. And I think whether or not we agree with it is certainly up to every individual council member, but you could give us the reason why we recommended these in the first place for a good reason, you know, whether we agree with it or not. I want to know where all the fiscal conservatives are in the city council, you know, it's the city of Fayetteville's money that we want to be careful with and we want it to go to who? First time home buyers, not anytime home buyers, right? We're trying to target a very specific group with this. It was never a for anyone, free for all, just get all the money to everybody. There's a reason why we set it up this way to incentivize city employees or police officers, right? They get a little bit more because they actually work for the city. You could be anyone in the city or the county or anywhere, you can get the citizen hero. They get a little bit less because we're getting a little bit less in return. So there was some logic behind all of this. These weren't done arbitrarily and I don't think enough discussion has been made or enough sort of like total reflection, comprehensive understanding has been made for why these recommendations are being offered. And everyone's just kind of dismissing them out of hand so that we can just get the money out of the door tomorrow. I think that, you know, we all have a lot of friends in the community who would love to see these dollars out there so that, you know, houses can get sold and things can get bought, but there's a reason why that these things exist. And I just don't think that we have had that conversation. that we have had that conversation just yet. Perhaps we can move for this to go to some other kind of policy hearing, but if you want to just get rid of all the recommendations, and just say, you know, "Let's just give all the money away." Again, I'm not necessarily against it, I just think that that flies in the face of a lot of the logic that we typically apply to most things.
Yeah.
You know, we're very, very fiscally conservative and considerate. Where's that type of, you know, thinking today?
All right.
One of the things I would say is that we do have your staff recommendations in front of you, but also for the councilman's request, we would come back with a review from City Attorney's Office, and make a recommendation on those as well. But clearly, if that is the interest of council for, to table this today, to bring it back at a time that we would be able to have the other stuff, we can do that as well.
Well, I mean, I certainly believe anything we do should be vetted for the legality of it, right? But at the end of, at the end of it, you want a program that's viable, and it works. I mean, and so, this is not about, to me, anything other than, because, and I want to say this in a most respectful way, we spent the entire evening talking about things we give away to a certain targeted group, you know? I mean, he came up here, and he gave a 30-minute conversation about incentives that we have, the federal and state address a lot of those things that we're talking about. Alex's previous slide showed a lot of things here, $800,000, $900,000 moved over. What we're trying to do now is encourage people to do better with the program. That money is not doing us any good with those buckets at 60% capacity. It needs to be at 0% to say that this is effective. That's unlike budgetary conservatism, where you're trying to retain resources, you're actually trying to get these out the door, to create homeowners who pay property taxes. We're talking about raising bus fares, where does that come from? Property taxes. Okay? We're talking about giving things away all day. You know, we're liberal in that respect, it's gotta come from somewhere, it comes from property taxes. So, I want everybody to own a home here that can, and I want to see people work toward that, and that was the whole purpose. I'm certainly for vetting it, but I think there should be some common sense approaches to it, so if you want to have it come back to where they look at some of these recommendations. But they brought this today to ask us to do some things. That's where this came from. I'm as shocked as you. I put this in two weeks ago, to come and to look at how we could tweak it and make it better, and any Realtor in here, or people who know, who've dealt with this, hear about that. I have trouble retaining employees who can't find a decent place to stay. You know, it's just a reality of it. And so, I just think this benefits the whole community, but these people pay property taxes, and we want people, this is the one greatest asset that people will own in their life, is their home, so we want to, we want to get out of this tier one, that's my thing, so. I mean, I'm not saying that, because I don't think that's legal or practical, but...
What I'm saying is, if we want to talk about...
I've given my recommendation, why don't you put in a request for yours? I mean, mine is just to, public to public service, so if council wants to wrap that into, into the... Sir? Oh, Councilmember Mahondros?
Oh, can I bypass?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it is, Courtney, I'm sorry. And then I got Brenda, so I'm sorry. So, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, McNair, and Green, and then back to you, Mahondros.
This is just a statement, my colleagues. We've been going back and forth this whole entire night, on things that we should be proud of, things that we have accomplished for residents in our cities. Can we tweak some of those things? Absolutely, because I remember the first thing we started off with, it was the city employees, and we opened it up to public services, so definitely, there are some tweaks that need to be done, but again, I think the back and forth, we're forgetting the whole mission of what, you know, what the job was, to be, you know, to be done, and I think we're doing a great job, we can work on a few things, but it seemed like this whole entire night, we've been going back and forth, nonsense. It's been some nonsense, but...
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember McNair?
Are you calling on me? I'm here. Toby?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Councilmember McNair, yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I appreciate all the questions, and all the dissecting, because I'm the type of person, I like to dig into information. You know, as I was reading over this information earlier today, and you brought up the fact those buckets was at a level that you were not satisfied with, they also struck me as well, because I know that those buckets needs to be down a little bit lower. Anything that we can do to get those buckets down lower, I think would be a great step towards, and a move towards, making this program successful.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Great comments. Councilmember Green?
I'd like to make a motion.
Hallelujah.
I know we probably are not gonna all agree, but the first comment, I want to make a comment real quickly. I think that one of the other things that is making this a little difficult to empty our buckets, is that we're at high interest rates. I'm hoping that I have, still have faith and hope that that is going to drop, and I think that supply is not what it has been in the past. So, I think those things are also playing into this problem, and part of that, I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to help with as well, through Mr. Causey and his group, so that we can get some of those developers interested in lots, and excess surplus lots that the city has. So, in saying all that, I would like to, I'm trying to figure out how to not make a negative motion, I don't like making negative motions, but I would really like to make a motion that, in this case, we not take city staff recommendations to restrict these. I would like to not follow the city's recommendations, so I guess I'd like to have a consensus that we, I don't really want it to, I don't want to delay a decision. I think we need to make a decision, even if the decision, even if they come back later and say, "Hey, we got a better idea, because the points you made were valid, and we got a better idea." But I would, I mean, I guess if we take no action, is that...
Or you could, if you, I guess how you could wrap it up would be if you...
That's why I was...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you was...
I asked the attorney mayor.
Yes, ma'am. My license is in the mail.
You could move to reject the recommendations?
To reject the recommendation? Okay. That was the word of...
He's saying, "And then you could add to direct staff to bring back additional recommendations if you so choose." I mean, I don't know if that was her motion.
Oh, you mean like the, just getting 20 million, not picking? Just 20, 30?
Y'all, this is...
All right. All right. So, it's, Councilmember Green has the floor. So, is your motion to...
I would like to have consensus, I guess we're not really in the motion phase, I would like to have a consensus to reject the staff's recommendations at this point, and then at a time that they would like to bring back other recommendations, then we're open to hear those.
All right. So, that's a motion by Councilmember Green, not to move forward with these. Is that a second that you had to hand up, or question? You had a question?
I think we should consider the positive one on there, is to allow public service and city retirees to be considered to the program. So, I mean...
Where? Which one?
Number four.
Sure. That's a good one.
I don't want, I mean, yeah, but, that's not, that's not restricting anything, though, is it? It's adding, so that they can get more money.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you look at the data you provided, Harney County's growing 18.6, Ho County's 15.5, we have to ask ourselves, why we're at 1%? Anytime you develop in a county, Cumberland County included, there's less stringent requirements than our stormwater, or UDO, okay? So, that's, but, and Cumberland County's dealing with stuff, so they don't really have much development out there. I'm saying that to say, Harney County and Ho County are in our MSA, so as we grow, we grow as a region, so as they grow, we're growing. If we want our 1% to grow, which will empty those buckets, we just need to streamline our processes and procedures, so people will develop here. If the supply was here, people would buy the units and use the money. We're never gonna use those buckets until we get more units on the market.
Well, and...
So, I support the recommendations.
All right. Well, so, there's a bit, a motion by Councilmember Green, it was, Councilmember Banks, okay, second. Let me say this, what you're saying is one problem, Councilmember Mahondros, right? That you, Councilmember Green, and the county are talking about how we streamline and align...
I agree with what you said.
Right, so 100%. However, it is not to the exclusion that we want more people in this community owning homes than renting them, right? Because everything that this will apply for, the people, the pictures that they showed us of the examples who bought this, were existing homes, or infill developments, so you still have two different processes. You have the permitting, and development, and UDO, and all of that, and you have the existing homes, because right now, corporations are coming into cities, buying these properties in these older neighborhoods, and they're jacking the rents up, which is making the problem worse. So, I want to, I'll submit something for my, to see if the council has consensus for my recommendation, I've repeated, and I'll do it, but I'll let you dispose of this motion first. So, hers is not to accept. I'm inclined to support, if we could separate it, you know, we could, I don't want to, if I don't want to vote against all of it, because I don't want to add an additional, an additional requirement to, like, number one. It's saying, "Take that year..."
I'm fine with tweaking it, so that they bring back something that looks a little bit different, having heard all of this. I'm not opposed to that, I just don't, I don't like the restrictedness of some of it. I do agree that other parts of it are good, but that's why I said, in its current format, the way it's recommended.
So, since I did the second, could I ask, and I'm trying to work with you, so we're on the same wavelength, for a recommendation to, for staff to come back with the recommendations of the number one, the requirement for the one year to be revisited, the performance to be revisited, and those are the two, I think, that we're having...
And to reword number three, so what he said was change it to "up to." What they're saying now is remove the guaranteed, so you need to put the "up to," just, because right now, if this is, if this is passed like this...
Right. Just... So, and then the other part is, if they own a home within three years...
That's a list that I'm gonna ask council...
Yes, so maybe what we need to say is, is for staff to bring it back with recommendations of what we have spoken about, and I'd be more than happy to second that, if you're okay with that.
I'm fine with admitting my motion to that, or my consensus request.
And council, since we've already talked about the requests, the only thing I'll ask is, as you're asking them to come back, if they could come back with the information that, you know, that this would work for any other state or government-owned agency, like we named, you know, FTCC and so forth, and then that, that owned a home previously, I think they may have to do that, if there are two couples, I think we waive it now for police, is what I heard? Is that right? No? So, in the recruiting, I remember when I asked this before I brought this request, in the recruiting process, if a police officer moves here, being that we're short, and he owned a home in South Carolina, is he eligible to buy through this program?
Not, you can get $30,000.
Okay, "up to," because now that number's less. So, he's ineligible?
There's a one-year requirement to work here for that.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
But that would not be the case if they wanted to go through the citizen hero. So, if they wanted to do the citizen hero, they were eligible for $20,000. But again, we can come back with all of this within 30 days, with...
To clean this up.
Yeah.
I would like to add that they come back by the May work session.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
At the May work session?
Yeah.
At the May.
All right. So, there's a motion to second it. All right. Council, we'll look to you for action on that, and that is to get this back with, to capture some of those things we've talked about. Oh, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, you had? All right. All right, council, let's vote. Councilmember McNair?
I'm going to vote.
This is to bring it back with those recommendations for us?
I like it like it is, so, I think we should move forward.
All right, so...
That is...
She's red, okay. All right. So, 5-4, motion carries, so it'll be back. All right. All right. So, council, moving, we skipped 607, 608. This one was, council, we talked about it, there's a process during special events, when, you know, people want to have bookbag giveaways, you want a youth festival park, you want to have something that incorporates anything in the downtown area, that's in the streets, prayer walks, all of these people have to go to special events. The carnival situation that we saw right now, if they come into our town, in our city, you have four to five, or hundreds of people from time to time, at any given time, at these events, they set up in the parking lot, and there is no process to where we know what's coming, how long it's staying, there's no security plan implemented. You know, I've had people who've called about, WCCG wanted to do a bookbag giveaway in front of their business, and they had to do a special event, that told them they had to have three police officers at eight o'clock in the morning to 12 o'clock. But these carnivals came in, this incident happened, they had two sheriff deputies there, there was no security plan mentioned, and a bad incident happened. So, I just wanted the same registration process, when some of these larger events come into our community, that there's some process, that the city knows what's going on. All right, questions? Is this from the last time, Jen?
I'm not sure I...
Well, what would have happened in this case, is if they would have applied, and they would have said that they had a carnival coming, and Joyce and them would have been able to see that, based on per 100 people you're expecting, you need two officers, or an officer, instead of having two people for 500 people.
Right, so, two carnivals that come regulars... One at the mall, and one at...
This place.
Clifton Plaza, yes. So, how do we, I mean, do you need a permit for that on private property? Does that already exist?
Well, again, that's what I'm asking, if they could figure out how it is. I mean, it's private property, it's not like they're doing the carnival at their home, it's still privately owned, but it's in a public space.
Right, but I'm just saying, how would you regulate that? So, let's say, those two that, where they kind of had them every year, they decide not to do it, or they find out about the new, if it's a new policy, and they go through the thing, but let's say it's a new public space that's privately held, and they have a festival or carnival, and they don't know, and they don't pull it, so how do we regulate?
Well, I mean, I think there's an education period, right? If you go find an operator, they didn't know you had it, or you got a change coming up, I think you can have a period where you educate them, and warn them, and then, you know, hope they'll comply. These are companies, so I'm sure they have to submit certain things to those shopping plazas, liability insurance, and all that stuff. Why wouldn't the city have some type of oversight on it?
Yes, so I think, Mayor, your request is for us to research what, if any, regulations we can put on them for security plans?
Right.
Yeah, that's it.
Ready for a vote?
Yep. Oh, Councilman, all right, so, all right, council, we'll look to you for your votes, for consideration for staff to come back with that. Sir? Can you clear the board for us, Jen? And now, we'll vote. Councilmember McNair?
That is green for me, sir.
All right. Thank you, council. All right, look forward to it. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I asked our new CFO, Tiffany Murray, to come to the podium. We will have her at your next council meeting, so we can introduce her on TV to the, to our viewing audience as well. But on behalf of the staff, I'm so pleased to present to you our next CFO, Tiffany Murray.
How you doing, Miss Tiffany? Welcome.
Doing well, thank you.
Now, we were not on our best behavior today, so don't judge us on that completely. We act better from time to time, but welcome, welcome. We act better from time to time, but welcome, welcome to the city.
Thank you.
All right, motion to adjourn, y'all?